Okay, let's get this meeting together. Call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, you're going to be hearing me talk a lot tonight. There's a lot of documents that we've received and I'll be -- I'm trying to minimize what I have to say, like letters. I'm not going to read the whole thing. All of these things will be online, but bear with me for the evening. Okay, in terms of the announcements, I want to thank the public for attending the 15th anniversary of 9/11. It was very well attended and I think the public appreciated the ceremony. And I want a special thank you to Kristin Warner and Matt Gasparius for making the arrangements for this successful ceremony. Other announcements. Merrimack Rocks, an event to celebrate Merrimack and its citizens, will be held this Saturday, September 24th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Watson Park. Come and join the fun with live music and fireworks. The 10th Annual Merrimack Fall Festival and Business Expo will be held on Saturday, October 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., rain or shine, at James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, located at 26 Babusick Lake Road. There will be venues, both inside and outside, over at 100 businesses, organizations, and crafters will be on hand to show citizens from all over New Hampshire what Merrimack and surrounding communities have to offer. Admission is free and is open to everyone. Okay, council meetings. Thursday, October 13th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room, a regular council meeting. One will also occur on Thursday, October 27th, again at 7:00 p.m. in this Matthew Thornton Room. The November and December meetings will be scheduled for the first and third Thursdays of each month on the following dates. Thursday, November 3rd, 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room, will be a regular council meeting, as will Thursday, November 17th, at 7:00 p.m. again in the Matthew Thornton Room here. Eileen.
I just have one. The Merrimack Police Department is hosting a Coffee with a Cop on October 7th at the brand-new Fig &amp; Olive, I assume it's a restaurant, at the residences at Daniel Webster at 246 DW Highway. Join them, please join them for coffee and conversation. No agendas, just an opportunity to meet, greet, and speak with us about anything you bring to the table. That's a very nice thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Okay, here's the beginning of the reading. PFOA update, but this is all good stuff, actually. We did receive a response letter from the Department of Health and Human Services regarding our letter that we had sent out asking for random blood sampling, and I will read this letter. It's going to be on the town website as well, but I am going to read it for the public. This is from Jake Leon, who's the Director of Communications, Department of Health and Human Services. I am writing to confirm that the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services has received the Merrimack Town Council's request that DHHS conduct a random blood sampling of Merrimack Village District customers. I am pleased to inform the Merrimack Town Council that DHHS has finalized a blood testing program to assess PFC exposure to residents served by the Merrimack District Public Water System. DHHS began developing a program to randomly sample MVD customers since it was first proposed by Merrimack Town Council member William Boyd during a meeting convened by the Governor, Maggie Hassan, in April 2016. At the request of the Merrimack Town Council, DHHS, and in coordination with the Governor's Office, will conduct a limited community exposure assessment by blood testing of randomly selected households in the MVD public water system. The Department is conducting the MVD-PFC Community Exposure Assessment to inform residents, state and local officials, and MVD about PFC exposure in MVD customers. Based on currently available data, the PFOS in the tap water are expected to be below the Environmental Protections Agency lifetime health advisory level of 70 parts per trillion. It is the Department's goal that the MVD community assessment will provide residents with information about approximate levels of PFC exposure in the community, which could partly be associated with drinking water exposure. In this letter is the final protocol for the assessment, which outlines the sampling program and describes the random sampling process. DHHS will begin sending letters of invitation to randomly selected MVD customers the week of October 3rd to inform them about the process to participate in the random blood sampling. The Department will continue to send letters of invitation to MVD customers until 200 individuals are enrolled in the community assessment. Once the Merrimack Town Council has received and reviewed the attached document, DHHS representatives will be pleased to present the community assessment during a town council meeting. We also received, and I'm not going to read all this, an explanation of the assessment, just to highlight some of the big issues. The objective is to assess PFOA and PFOS exposure to residents served by the Merrimack Village District Public Water System. Due to the community concern, the DHHS, at the request of town administrators and in coordination with the Governor's Office, is conducting a limited community exposure assessment. What they're going to do is have 200 individuals who are on the MVD drinking water system will be enrolled, and how they're going to do that is they're going to use the GIS system to enroll the first 100. They're going to send out letters, there will be instructions within the letter that if they're interested, they are to respond either online, or there's a phone number included, that they call and say, yes, I'll be a part of it. Then they're going to wait, and you have to respond within 30 days. After 30 days, they will go for even more, depending upon how many they return, or people who will enroll, then they'll know how many more they have to invite or send out based upon the total of 200. And we're going to, again, have all these documents online under the PFOA section. Participants will receive the individual test results at the completion of the program, and a summary of the community's results will be shared with participants and with the public. Results may also be compared to other communities of concern around the country. And they give some indicators, for example, they're going to be asking some variables of age, gender, distance from St. Cabane, and Wells 4 and 5, occupational history, and these are some of the things we had spoken about when we originally talked about it, and presence of a water filtration device within the home. So if you've just added, if you've had one for years, that would rule you out, probably, although if it's a recently installed one, even within the last year, probably wouldn't rule you out. Okay, so, some good news, and I will have all of that information put on the website tomorrow morning. Any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah.
Yes, Tom?
Are they going to take a look at any other environmental variables?
I believe that we do not have the questionnaire yet. As soon as it's decided, they're going to be sending it to us. I'm sure they are, like occupation, if you work within, and that's one of the criteria.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a lot of stuff in your house and in your car that would expose you to these kinds of substances.
Understood. I suspect they're probably looking for a cluster, not a variability, if you know what I mean. And they probably would have a similar criteria variables in other populations that they would not control for, but that would be incorporated into the analysis, I would imagine. Yes, Eileen?
I asked that question, Tom, when you sent it to me, about what the questionnaire looks like, which will be indicative of the, you know, what they're going to be looking for and making allowances for, and they don't have that done yet, but they're working on it.
Okay.
In the meantime, I'd like to-
That's why I asked for the questionnaire, to take a look at it.
Yeah. In the meantime, I do want to thank the Department of Health and Human Services for their quick response to our letter. We appreciate that. And they did offer to come before the town council if we wanted to have them explain the assessment. I'm not sure, certainly having the questionnaire in hand would be helpful. What's the sense of the council? Should we arrange that or not? Yes, Bill?
I would say it's appropriate.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So we can, yes, Eileen?
Once the questionnaire is developed, yes, or do you want to?
Yeah, that would be.
No, they've announced the protocol they're going to use. All we need, the only piece missing is what the questionnaire's going to look like. I mean, it would be a great opportunity for them to come in here and talk to us about what their expectations are and what, you know, what some of the issues are, and it's a good opportunity for the towns to hear, from them directly, what they have to say.
Right. Bill?
They're going to start on October 3rd, so presenting 10 days after the process has started, I think will give opportunity for people to listen, you know, 10 days in, especially where they're, you know, identifying and resuming mailing stuff out, you know, at least having them here 10 days after the fact to answer questions that people in the community might have besides us, I think would be appropriate.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so we'll wait, and we can talk with them and get back to the council. Okay, comments from the press or public. No rushing. There are no recognitions, resignations, or retirements. Okay, appointments. Annual review with the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Committee submitted by, or actually before us, Chair Susan Lee, per Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6. At least annually, there should be an annual review with the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Committee. This agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns a council should know or could act on. Good evening, Susan.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. Let's see, I think the last time we met was a little-
Is your microphone on?
It is on.
Try again, because they're not hearing you.
They're not hearing me.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay. Is that better?
Ah, perfect, thank you.
Oh, so if I hear the reverb, then I know I'm okay?
Yeah, we've been, I've been hearing that all of us need to speak a little bit more directly, which is not what I'm trying to do.
So, we met a little bit over a year ago, and I think last time we were all concerned about the low membership on the EDCAC. We were down to three, we're now up to six, so we had a good year. And we have some, one of the projects we're undertaking right now was proposed by one of our new members, so that's good, we're all happy with that. In the past year, one of our activities was to sort of act as a sounding board, a review team for Gillian Harris, who is the Planning and Zoning Administrator in Community Development. She had participated in the UNH Economic Development Academy, and her project for that was to start a development guide for Merrimack. And it was something that we had been talking about doing ourselves, but it was something Gillian was already well into by the time we started looking into it. So she's got a really nice draft. I don't know whether she's got it finished yet, because sometimes life and work get in the way, but it looked really nice. We provided some feedback from a user-friendly standpoint, but when we saw the first draft of it, it was sort of what we all had in mind anyway, so that we didn't have to do a lot, we just had to say, "Good job, Gillian," and make the text bigger so we can read it on the screen, because we're all getting older. So, but it looks great, so once that's completed, it'll be a great tool for people in the town. Let's see. So, and that took a few meetings. I think if you recall, when I spoke to you last year, when our membership was down, we had opted to go to a five-meeting-a-year schedule, adding on meetings as they were needed. We've actually just, we had an unscheduled meeting this month to get our next project up and running, and we've actually got another one scheduled for November, so we're moving back in the direction of more meetings rather than fewer meetings. So again, good thing, things are moving in a good direction. The project we're working on right now is to conduct another business survey. We did one in 2009 to find, just get kind of a feel of what the business community was made up of and what they felt were positives and negatives in the town, to give us an idea of things that we might want to look at doing. This one we're doing was actually suggested by Joshua Skivoni, who's one of our new members. Oh, I should actually, our new members are Ken Assai, Joshua Skivoni, and Don Shepherd, and Don is the president of the Merrimack Chamber. So we've got the Economic Development Merrimack Chamber connection is back in place, the way it was when we started. And Don also stepped up and is assisting, she's an assistant, or a co-organizer for the Fall Festival this year, which is, you know, so we've got a few more tools that we can make use of. So this business survey that we've just finalized the draft of is going to be looking at if our businesses are aware of the tools available to them on the town website, if they know, if they've ever made use of community development during the development process, or, you know, have they stopped in and talked to Tim and his staff? Are they aware of any of the regional resources available to them, like the Regional Economic Development Group over in, and I'm going to, it's not Pellam, Exeter. Because there are some, there are some really wonderful people over there and programs over there to help people that, you know, may be starting out and looking for almost some mentoring to get a good business plan pulled together. But we need to find out whether people know it exists, and then from there, we can decide if there's something we can do to boost the awareness here within the town. So that's sort of what we've been up to, and our future plan right at the moment is to, you know, work with the results of the business survey, which we expect will go live the day of the Fall Festival, so we'll be able to hand out information so people can go right online and answer it. We'll probably have some hard copies there, and we'll also be sending out emails to anybody that we have. We can have people sign up on a list the day of the Fall Festival if they are not currently on one of the town distribution lists. So in November, we're actually going to have a gentleman named David Priest, who is the Executive Director and CEO of Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, which is sort of a comparable organization to Reddick, which Merrimack falls under, so we don't fall under his jurisdiction. But he's working on a lot of presentations involved with livable communities, and that is something that I think we're all aware, we need to not only have communities that are, that help people that want to live in place or just have an active lifestyle as, you know, their work careers are winding down, but also we want to be attracting our young people to stay here in the region. And so we're going to learn some interesting information from Mr. Priest, and hopefully we'll get some ideas from that. And as always, our meetings are open to the public. We hold them on the second Wednesday of the month. The exact month that they're held on, you can find on the posted agendas, and anybody who would like to join us, we're happy to sit down and talk with you, and we have all kinds of information we can provide you with, with activities we've done in the past, and where we might be going in the future, and so we'd love to have you join us. So I think that, oh, this is the specter of the new markets tax credit program. We had been asked at one point to look into this program, sort of as a refresher. It's a program run from the federal government. There is a pool of funds that are available to areas, underutilized areas, and these are designated by the results of the incomes of the census, the last one being in 2010. And Merrimack just barely qualifies with land or a zone from the north end of town to the south end of town along Route 3. The program is fairly convoluted. It requires a lot of jumping through hoops, and the amount of money available is limited, and there's a high competition for it. When I finally spoke to Jack Donovan, who's the Executive Director of Business, the Finance Authority, New Hampshire Business Finance Authority, he does not oversee this program, but he did tell me that because of the competition and the fact that Merrimack just barely qualifies, it would be highly unlikely, if there were any funds available, that Merrimack would be considered really in need for the, these funds to find a project that would qualify for us. And given the fact that every time the EDCAC membership looked at the program, we kept coming up with more questions and fewer answers, we have, as a committee, we've decided that we're going to leave it where it stands. So, that, I think that completes all the things that we had open at your request to us, so.
Thank you. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I want to, I talked to David, he and I are on the Rail Transit Authority Advisory Board, and I, he mailed me the minutes from the last board meeting, because I'm the secretary this year, and I complimented him on the article that was in Union Leader last Sunday about that program. And it had been something that I had been talking to a few people about in town, as a way of mainly dealing with sidewalk issues in a lot of areas, but it tied right into the concept that I was giving them in terms of walkability, not just walkability, in a limited sense, but the opportunities available for people to move around. And so he told me that someone was coming in from his organization to explain this to you in the near future, so I think he's a hard worker, very thorough, and, you know, it'll be interesting to see what he comes up with and from his area, because he encompasses Manchester down to Derry. So, it's sort of a, I think it's a good starting point.
Okay, great, that's wonderful. Please join us when he will be, he will be attending the EDCAC meeting on the second Wednesday of November, which I believe is the-
9th.
The 9th.
Little voice from the background.
Yes.
Eileen?
I think that that's wonderful, that you're meeting with this person who is dealing with community, a community as a whole, livable community and that kind of thing, because I've recently spoken to two of the larger employers, and I always say to them, "Why don't you expand? Why don't you expand here in Merrimack? You're expanding other places." And they are having an issue with trying to find the technical talent to fill those slots, so making Merrimack more livable and, you know, a place that people want to, you know, there's things to do for younger people and that kind of thing would really help to attract those kinds of people, I think. So I think it's an important thing that you're doing.
Great.
Dan?
Susan, I just wanted to say thank you, and make sure everybody on the EDCAC committee for their effort on the Business Expo next Saturday. I know everybody here knows that you've been working with it every year, and just wanted to extend thank you for all the effort your committee, yourself included, obviously, put into it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I will pass that on.
Anyone else? Saying none? Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate all you do. Next on the agenda, annual review with the zoning board of adjustments, with recently-elected Chairman Patrick Dwyer, and your vice, right, Fran Larue. Per Town of Merrimack Charter Section -6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the zoning board of adjustment. So you can go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam-
Congratulations, I think.
Chair and councilors, thank you for having us this evening. So, this year, in the, from July 1st of 2015 through June 30th, we had 58 petitions. Of the 58 petitions, 43 were variances, we had 10 special exceptions, two equitable waivers, one appeals from an administrative decision, and two requests for rehearing. Of the 58 petitions, 51 were approved, 57 were denied for various reasons, and that is pretty much where we're at with the zoning board. We have, we had Tom for a very short period of time as a-
One meeting.
For our one meeting as an alternate, and we miss you.
You can go to two.
I did go to meetings, but you only needed me for one, so. And right now, we have, let's see, four active?
Four active. We need one alternate.
We have one alternate, which is, Lenny, so we have one alternate position open at this time.
But I'm talking to someone who used to be on the ZBA, and is coming back as alternate. Ah, nice.
So that's where we're at with the zoning board for this past year. Is there any questions from the council?
Any questions? Saying none.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's the "I thank" part. Fran is smiling more.
Yes, I am.
And good luck to you. You have a good group to work with, and Tim, I know, in his department-
Thank you, thank you.
Is pivotal as well, so. Thank you.
We have a couple of big zoning things for you to review this evening as well, so very interested to hear what your thoughts are on those changes.
So you'll be sticking around then?
I-
Oh, just going home and watch us on TV. Not if you can watch the Patriots game, no. Yeah, no, I've seen you tearing over there. Thank you very much, appreciate all of your time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, councilors. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
No?
It's got to be a record, to hold two of them, and we're done in 20 minutes, which we appreciate, by the way, don't get me wrong.
By the way, you've just cursed us, you know.
Well, what can I say? Who's next? Planning Board?
Okay, public hearing, acceptance of donation from Merrimack Police Department, submitted by Lieutenant Denise Roy. Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of an anonymous donation, and I'll have you give the details, How's that?
Thank you very much. Am I speaking loud enough? I like to hear myself talk, so I'll-
I noticed.
It's okay.
Payback, you know, the old payback.
It seems to be the season for people who like to hear themselves talk.
Oh, good. This is the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the council, Eileen Paul. I appreciate you giving us the time today to come speak to you. We're here tonight to request permission to accept a donation of $14,500, an anonymous donation, to be used specifically for tactical vests. And if I may take a few more moments, I normally would, to explain how we came about to receive this donation, I am sorry for being the long-winded person I'm going to be. On Saturday, February 27th, a young woman, Ashley Gwenden, a 2005 Merrimack High School graduate, started her first shift as a Prince William County Police Officer in Virginia. Shortly into her, Ashley's first shift, she, her- Shortly into her, Ashley's first shift, she, her field training officer, and a backup officer responded to a local residence for a domestic disturbance. Unbeknownst to the officers, the male party within the home had just shot and killed his wife, all while their small child was watching. When the officers approached the door, they were met by the suspect, who was armed with a rifle. Shortly after their initial contact with him, he opened fire on the officers, striking all three of them. Although Ashley received a fatal gunshot wound, she still directed the young child, who was near the father, away from the home, potentially saving his life. Ashley succumbed to her gunshot wounds and died while on the operating table at the hospital. She selflessly did the job she was hired to do, something we all do every day. She understood what she was doing, and because of her actions, again, a young life most likely was saved that night. After the funeral services of Ashley, Chief Doyle and I were approached by a Merrimack resident. Sorry, I'm really blind, I'm going to have to hold it up. This resident wanted to make a difference in way of the donation in the memory of Ashley. The selfless donor wanted to purchase some type of equipment that would help protect the officers, who protect all of us. After discussing several options collectively, the donor, Chief Doyle and I, and Lieutenant Tarleton, determined that tactical vests, ones which would help protect the officers against higher caliber, higher caliber weapons, such as the ones that killed Ashley, would be the most effective tool. Although Ashley's life may not have been saved that night by the tactical vest, giving the officers more protection, more of a chance of survival, in the event that they do come face to face with an armed assailant, could mean the difference between life and death. The tactical vests which have been chosen are meant to be in addition to the current ballistic vests worn by the patrol officers now. The current vests, like the one Lieutenant Tarleton has on now, do not protect against rifle rounds, or higher caliber rounds. These vests would be placed in each one of the vehicles, there'd be 15 of them, which are utilized by the police department. It would include the detective cars, the administrative, administrative cars, and the patrol cars. Lieutenant Tarleton actually is going to give you a brief demonstration on how quickly these vests can be put on, and will also let you actually touch them, because you'll see why it's not practical to wear them during an eight-hour shift. But Lieutenant Tarleton?
I'm going to quickly show you.
Or just the weight.
I'll pass it around. It's, it's not light, but it's much lighter than the vests that we have currently we've been using for years. But anyways, that's, that's about as quick as it goes on. And then you have two pull cords, and you pull the cords up, and it cinches down. And then that's it.
Wow.
And basically, like Lieutenant Roy was saying, it's, it's called a plate carrier. So it doesn't have any Kevlar in it. The vests, or the carriers that the detectives and the administrative officers are going to have, will actually have Kevlar, like our vests. But for the patrolmen that are re-wearing our old vests, it's just a plate carrier. So it just carries a plate front wear. And it's for high caliber rounds. And the, the pouches that we have on here right now, we're probably going to put something a little bit different, this is just a sample that they gave us, gives you an idea of what the vest looks like. And it's a lot more maneuverable than what we have in the cars right now. A lot lighter, it's much easier to put on than what we have, so.
But you want to feel it?
So, yeah.
Unfortunately, we have to consider those now, don't we?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Well, it still leaves a lot of area exposed.
Right.
Well, you still have the vest on.
I understand that.
Yeah, as far as, yeah, exactly. But it affords us, like Lieutenant was saying, it affords us protection from high caliber rounds. Right now with our vests, we don't have it.
The majority, the majority of the metalworkings are covered hard, most of the ones.
You need help getting it off.
It is having service, be careful.
Dan, I've got a lifting restriction.
It's like right here.
That is significant, Jesus. Oh, yeah. You wouldn't want to have to with that in the summer.
But you can see why it's not practical to wear one of those during an eight-hour shift.
So we, we currently have these, and the vests are just more cumbersome?
Yeah, they're, they're an older style vest, and they're actually, it's, it's, it almost looks like they, you ever see a bomb tech? You see those vests?
Yep.
They literally, they look like that.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks. Yeah, they literally, thank you. They're, we've had them for, I don't know how many years now. But they're very, very heavy. They're not easy to put on. And I'll make it funny here, you ever see Christmas Story with Ralphie? Is everyone familiar with that? Randy? Remember Randy, when the mother was getting him ready for school in the morning, and he's in his winter coat, and he couldn't put his, I mean, literally, it, it, very hard to maneuver these things. But they were, they were what we had at the time, but we've had them for years, and they still work. But these are a lot easier to get in and out of, and they provide you with the same protection. And we have pouches on these, which we don't have the ability on those vests that we have right now. So you can put extra magazines, or first aid kits, whatever we need to put on the vests, so.
Can I get heavier?
If I, if I may, just one more moment. In closing, I just think it's really important for the council and the, the community to understand who Ashley was and why this donation means so much to us. Again, she graduated from Merrimack High School in 2005. She attended Emory Riddle Aeronautical University in Daytona, Florida, where she received a bachelor's degree in aeronautical science. She served in the Marine Corps Reservist, where she was involved in aeronautics and the mortuary affairs office. She volunteered a suicide prevention program, local pantries. Her high school model in the yearbook was live for something rather than die for nothing. In her short years, she led a remarkable life. The donor writes in the letter, Ashley was an extraordinary individual, and her heroic service to her community will never be forgotten. She was a strong, caring, and compassionate young woman, that was compelled to help people of all walks of life. Ashley had a generous heart, and knowing that I'm doing something to honor her memory gives me comfort to be able to touch someone else's life in a positive way. On behalf of the chief, we want to sincerely thank the donor who believes in keeping us safe, so we can go home to our families at the end of our shift, something Ashley's family would never have the opportunity to know.
Well said.
Thank you.
Well said. Jackie?
That was a hard thing to follow. What an honor it was for Merrimack to have such a, such a hero like that, who happened to be my next-door neighbor.
Yes.
I was wondering, what else you use to protect yourself? Around your head, or your legs?
We, as far as the legs, not much. We have ballistic helmets in the cars right now, so we do have helmets, similar to the ones at the containment team, if you've seen those, I don't know if you have. So we have head protection. But right now, like I said, the only other thing we have in the cars are those vests, which we'd be looking to replace with these, which are, like I said, a lot more user-friendly, so.
Anyone else? Yes, Tom?
I guess, I, I think it's great. It's a wonderful thing to do, and I really appreciate the person making the contribution. What I, I'm not sure I understand is, what are the chances that you would happen to have taken the time to put that on when you go to a domestic dispute?
If I?
Does it really serve much, or is it only going to be technically useful when you have a, a known shooter out there, or something like that?
To say that each and every domestic we would throw this on is unrealistic, that probably wouldn't happen. However, we do get a lot of domestic calls where we know that there are weapons already inside the home. We have, we're privy to that information. So knowing that an officer is likely to put the vest on in order to, just in case something happens. And it's not just domestic situations. We frequently go to armed suspects, barricaded suspects, all those types of calls, we'll have the opportunity, and the officers will be able to utilize these vests.
Yeah, and God forbid in the event of an active shooter, I mean, we prepared for it, and we hope it never happens, but this is the type of equipment that we would need under those circumstances. And, you know, we talk about domestics, we go to them every day, but Ashley went to a domestic, and, you know, we all know how that wound up, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
So that's, yeah. You know, they wouldn't be, we wouldn't be, every time we go to a hot call type of thing, we wouldn't be throwing these on, we certainly wouldn't be doing that. But under the circumstances, like Lieutenant Roy was explaining, that under those circumstances, we would probably deploy them.
Okay, thanks. I, like I said, I think it's a wonderful thing this, this individual has done to make this donation, and I'm glad that we're going forward with it.
Dan?
It's more of a question, and I hope it doesn't come out, because there's no criticizing to the gift, because it's, you know more of what you want. But I just, I, I look at that vest, and I feel like the one that's in the trunk that you see, the umpire kind of seems like more protection. But if you're saying the new one is just as good, then that's great. But I'm, I just feel like there's just so many missing space, like that plate's only covering so little, I would think that for that shooter situation, that you'd really be going in with a bigger shield-like. So I'm a little confused.
It is, it is bulkier, and it does cover a little bit more area. The other, the other thing I didn't mention about is, we've, we've found that when we put them on, they're so bulky and big.
Maneuverability is.
It makes it difficult to get to your duty gear. So if you need to draw your pistol, you, God forbid, you need to reload your firearm, or you need to go to less lethal, all those things, trying to get around that is very difficult. It pushes it down, it sits over it.
I literally could wear it as a dress, it's that long.
Yeah, it's, they're, they're very, old school is kind of the best way I can explain it.
Sure, okay, okay.
With this, we have the plates, again, it's not, yeah, it's not to the extent, I mean, that, that is all around, even there's no.
It just seems concerning, when I saw you put it on, and knowing what the older one looked like, I just felt like you're being less protected. Again, I'm totally in support of the donation, it's a wonderful thing. And if you say it's the ones you guys want, I'm behind you 100%.
I think it's a great way to go. There are a lot of agencies to include state police, and state police has ordered 250 of these, I think.
Yep, yep.
Because they, they see the benefits of something like this, and.
Great.
And I really, I think it's a good thing, and I certainly think it's, it's an upgrade, so.
And then just a follow-up quick, different area, but what's the policy for wearing a vest? Is it personal choice for officers, or is it a mandatory? Do all officers wear a Kevlar underneath their shirt?
When you're in uniform, you have your.
And it's a policy thing, though?
Correct.
Management, chief, what, because I don't really know what the history of it is.
No, it's, all patrol officers must wear a vest.
Is it a, in Merrimack, do other towns do the similar thing, or is it a statewide thing?
Yeah, from a liability standpoint, yes. There are some smaller agencies who may or may not require officers to do it, but Merrimack, if you are putting your uniform on to go out in a patrol function, you must have your uniform on.
Okay.
I mean, your ballistic vest uniform, you should have that.
And has that been going on for, is it like a decade or more, that that's been the policy?
That we've had?
Yeah.
Since I can read.
I think it began when, when it went, came out of your clothing allowance and went to the budget. I think that's when it became mandatory, but I'm not 100%.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Because we renewed the vest every five years. Their shelf life is only five years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I would imagine the maneuverability in those other ones, I mean, how are you going to move fast?
I would never be able to get up if I fell down.
With that, I'm sure the risk, you have more exposure, but you have more maneuverability, which also adds to your survival, too.
Well, see, I wasn't the mind of a cop, I was the guy wanting to hide behind a bigger shield. Obviously, my psychology was shared with everyone up here.
I want to be able to move fast, isn't that out of the way?
Looking for the bigger shield, so, again, thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Saying none, but we need a motion.
We need to open the public hearing.
Oh, thank you very much. I always forget that. Open the public hearing at 7:53. Saying none. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:54.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept the expenditure of an anonymous donation with our thanks and gratitude, in the amount of $14,500 for the Merrimack Police Department to be used for the purchase of tactical vests, to be placed in marked and unmarked cars that the police department utilizes pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8:15. Furthermore, that the manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any more documents necessary to accept the donation.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Tom Mahan. Any other further comments? Nothing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, 7-0-0. And if, if the only thing I forget is to open the public hearing for tonight, that's pretty good.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Compared to all the rest. Thank you very much.
And to the donors as well.
Appreciate it.
I'll take Mr. Mahan.
Okay, are there any legislative updates from state reps? Saying none. Town managers report? Eileen?
Ken, just one thing. The function hall at Wasserman Park is now available for private rentals. The hall features a small commercial kitchen, and then two different rooms that are available for use. Rentals are accepted on a first-come, first-served basis, and for complete details on the facility, including pricing options, visit the Parks and Recreation Department website at www.merrimackparksandrec.org, or call them at 882-1046. Thank you.
Okay, there is no consent agenda, nor is there any old business. New business, Captain Albert, come on down. Donation acceptance for the Merrimack Police Department. Town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $5,000 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack to the police department, to be used towards the purchase of a new police K-9 and formation of new team pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. Now, that is what we would need a motion about. The remainder of this description is really just information only. The Merrimack Rotary Club has further applied to the Rotary International for $5,000 grant to be used towards the new K-9 unit expenses.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just need to correct one thing.
Okay.
I got a letter from the president of Rotary, Troy Arthun, and in our initial discussion, our verbal discussion, I, I thought the total was a $10,000 grant, $5,000 from the club, $5,000 from the International, which they were applying for. I got a letter today from Troy indicating that it's a $2,500 grant with a, they're going to, they're applying, excuse me, $2,500 from the club, and they're applying for $2,500 from the International through a grant. So I beg your apology.
So it's a total of $5,000?
Five, total of $5,000.
Okay, so the, just to make sure if I understand you correctly, the information-only part?
Yes.
Is the Merrimack Rotary Club has further applied to the Rotary International for $2,500?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the motion would have to be acceptance and expenditure of $2,500?
Correct. There, it's a definitive $2,500, and they're, once they get the acceptance of the other.
Okay, go for it.
Well, I, we're, again, we're seeking.
Or is that it?
We're, we're just seeking acceptance from the council. Our partners, and friends and supporters from the Rotary Club have made this gracious donation. They came forward and asked what they could do with the, with the whole process of the, the purchase of the K-9 and so forth, and all the expenses. I went over with them all of the expenses, and they, they came up with this number. We're grateful, and it would be very helpful to the K-9 unit.
Now, we have a new dog coming, right?
We, actually, we have the new dog.
Oh, you do, already?
Yes.
Now, he has been not trained yet?
No.
Because he has to be with his partner to be trained?
The, the, we have a new shepherd, it's a, it's another German shepherd. We picked him up last week, he went through his physicals and stuff, we went through some of that, getting all that taken care of. We were, went down and reviewed the dog, and watched him work for a little bit. All of us were satisfied with what we observed. He's now with his handler, Officer Stephen Wallen, and they begin the Boston Police Department's Patrol Dog Academy on Monday. That'll be 10 weeks, there'll be about a month off, and then the dog will go to drug detection school, and that's six weeks. And then hopefully by then, we'll get him acclimated and working with Sergeant Walters and Gunny for a period of time, and then Gunny will retire, and the new K-9 will take over.
Gotcha. Have Gunny and he met yet?
Excuse me?
Have Gunny and the new dog? Does the new dog have a name?
Uh, well, yeah, he does. There was a discussion about how the naming of the dog was going to come about, and speaking with trainers, and tradition, and everything else, they left it with the handler, the it with the handler, the chief approved that, and the dog is now named Dallas. The handler named the dog Dallas in honor of the officers who were recently died in the line of duty down in Dallas.
So have Dallas and Gunny met?
They, they seemed to get along well, they were on a containment team training day and seemed to do quite well, they played well together.
Excellent.
Get my two hounds, forget it.
You want to do a quick question?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Go up, go up to the microphone.
Okay. You said that you received $2,500 from the Rotary Club.
Could you, could you list your, say your name, please?
My name's Derek Edgery, I'm with Nashua Telegraph.
Okay.
You said that you received $2,500 from the Rotary Club, and then there was another pending $2,500?
Yes, they, we, well, they're, they've offered to make the donation, it's pending the acceptance from the council of $2,500, but what they'd be doing is they're applying to their international, their nationwide, I guess, nationwide club, and they have to submit a grant. And they do all that work, and if it's approved, then we'll receive, again, if approved by the council, another $2,500.
Okay, so you've already received the first $2,500 and?
We haven't received anything yet.
We have to approve it first.
Okay, sorry, yeah, I understand what you're saying, it's just a little confusing. I appreciate you clarifying that for me.
And just to let you know, on the table right over there, there's a copy of everything on the agenda that might be useful to you, too.
No, a big pack.
A big fat one. Okay, yes, Jackie?
Captain, how much is the total program expected to cost?
Well, the.
Before he gets to work.
The canine itself costs $7,000. The handler's home had to be outfitted with a portable kennel, a kennel and a pen at the house, as well as there was the medical, there's insurance for the dog, there was the, the actual physical exam that was done by Mercy Hospital ran $1,300 because they give the dog a total physical, they do CAT scans, they do blood work and everything else. We want to know we're getting a healthy dog. And then, then there's just the cost of training, the police academy, the patrol dog academy's $1,500, the drug detection academy is another $500, and then there's just the sundry, I could go on a list of different things that we need to purchase, as well as equipment for the officer, so.
That's it?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, and it's taken a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that the town council accept and expend a donation of $2,500 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack to the police department to be used towards the purchase of a new police canine, Dallas, and formation of the new team pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8:15. Furthermore, that the town manager and her proxy be authorized to sign any documents necessary to accept and expend.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Finley Rothaus. Okay, any questions? None, saying, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? 7:00. Thank you very much, Captain Albert.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, who's going to be doing this next one, Paul? Eileen, okay. Donation acceptance from Merrimack Parks and Recreational Department, and I guess Eileen's going to, right, Eileen? Town council will consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $400 from the Merrimack Lions Club. You can go right ahead.
And that is basically it?
So moved.
Seconded.
Now, this is a motion to go, oh, we have a, we have a football game going on, okay. We need to move this to public hearing, right? I was told it was.
No, that's the next item on the agenda, this one is just a simple donation for the day camp.
Oh, sorry.
That we've done.
I wrote it in the wrong area.
Nope.
On the next one, there'll be a public hearing, okay?
Yes.
See, that pressure, Dan, it's making me mess up.
What are you talking about?
Okay, motion? Did someone actually make it yet? They didn't? Oh, so moved, Dan, of course. And did I get a second?
Yes, Bill Boyd.
Bill Boyd. All those in favor?
Well, it should be discussion.
Go ahead, discussion.
Did we mention it was from the Lions Club, and if we did, I'm sorry for.
Yes, $400 from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Recreation Camp Scholarship Fund, which allows low-income Merrimack families the opportunity to go to summer camp.
I believe that defeats the purpose of so moved.
Yeah, but the public doesn't know what the money was directed toward. Ooh, honorary group tonight. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 7:00.
With gratitude.
With gratitude.
With gratitude, absolutely.
And number three, consideration of proposed zoning ordinance amendments, and this would be moved to public hearing if it moves along. This is by, submitted by Director Tim Thompson. Town council to consider the proposed zoning ordinance amendments regarding accessory dwelling units and signs. I'll let you go for it.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the council. Here before you tonight for the first reading of two sections of the zoning ordinance that have been recommended by the planning board for some changes. The first is section 2.02.1, which is the section dealing with accessory dwelling units. As you may or may not be aware, the state legislature approved a significant change to how communities now are allowed to treat accessory dwelling units, and really, it changes the way that we have to look at and address how they're approved here in Merrimack. Towns can no longer restrict occupancy of accessory dwelling units to family members only, they actually cannot be restricted based on family relationship anymore per this new statute. In addition, in the 2013 master plan, the town also looked at accessory dwelling units as something that should be changed to made as, to make it a more attractive alternative type of housing unit that is an easy way to help address some of the requirements of the state's workforce housing laws without having to do significant wholesale changes to the town's ordinances. So what we've proposed in the regulations, which when we get to public hearing, we'll get into more detail, is that there will be two separate processes. One for the traditional accessory dwelling unit that's attached inside the house, doesn't change the way the house looks, it still looks like a single-family home, they'd no longer have to go to the zoning board to get a special exception for those, they'd actually be approved administratively by my department and the building department so long as they meet certain criteria. The other way we're looking at doing this is a conditional use permit process, which would go to the planning board rather than the zoning board, and those would be for any detached accessory dwellings. So if you had a separate garage and you wanted to put an accessory dwelling in on the second floor of a garage, there'd be a new process that would allow for detached accessory dwelling units as well, which aren't currently addressed in our ordinance today. The second section that we're looking at making changes to is section 17, which is the sign ordinance. We are not looking at making significant substantive changes to the signed ordinance. What we're really doing here is reacting to and addressing the requirements from a U.S. Supreme Court case that came out of the state of Arizona that requires municipalities to make sure that we're not basing any restrictions based on the content of our signs. So we did a comprehensive evaluation primarily by Jillian Harris in my office, coordinated with our legal counsel, to look at in particular those signs that don't require a permit currently in Merrimack, but there were all kinds of different requirements based on what was in the signs. So we had to make some significant changes to make sure that we took out any kind of content bias within the ordinance and regulations. So that's really what we're proposing in front of you now, is to take out anything that would be considered content bias, that regulates different types of speech differently. We need to treat all commercial speech and non-commercial speech in consistent manner. So that's essentially what we're trying to do with these changes. And I certainly look forward to when we hold the public hearing and go into more detail as to exactly how the planning board and staff are proposing to do these things.
I'm dying to ask, and I don't know if I should. Could you give me an example on something that, and I'm sure there's many, but could you give us sort of a easy one? What might be restricted but now cannot be? In terms of signs?
Just to give you an idea, we previously had about 28 different subsections to the section of permit not required. When we finish with these amendments, if the council looks favorably upon them, there'll be nine instead of 23. For example.
That's right, okay, just give one or two examples.
If you had a contractor job sign, if it was in a residential district, you were allowed one size, if you were in a commercial district, you were allowed a different size. Directional signs were different sizes, again, depending on the type of speech that they were attempting to restrict. So we need to be treating these things consistently in order to avoid any First Amendment challenges.
Gotcha. Yes, Finley?
I don't think I followed that, I'm sorry.
Just to give you an idea.
The difference between commercial and residential, I thought, would be very evident of what it was for, though we don't have too much in the way of enforceable sign ordinances at this point, I guess, but, but if, you know, so I thought that might be a distinction. It is not, is what you're saying?
It, you can separate commercial and residential, those are still allowed to be done. Let me see if I can find the, the language that we used. Jillian had a very good way of putting this when we presented this to the planning board.
Couldn't get it to you tonight, huh?
Because if it's a content base while you're looking.
The, the Supreme Court decision, which is Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona, if you wanted to look it up, was basically stating that you cannot make distinctions based on the message of the speech. In this case, the Gilbert, Arizona sign code placed stricter limits on temporary event signs, but freely allowed ideological and political signs despite the fact that these, all these types of sign have the same effect on traffic safety and community aesthetics. So what the court is saying is, you can't treat this church's sign, which is essentially the same type of temporary sign that a political advertisement is, any differently than you would that political advertisement. So the court's decision basically looks at communities and said that you have to look at this with a strict scrutiny standard under the law. So that's the standard that the courts are going to look at when you're looking at a First Amendment challenge. So what we've tried to do is basically eliminate wherever we possibly could, anything that could be concerned as a content-based restriction, which we, again, went through with Drummond Woodsom, our attorneys, and they were satisfied, and they were actually, one of the handouts you see in the packet was one of their attorneys actually.
Right.
Put together some municipal guys that we were a little ahead of the curve on, we had already started looking at this before we got that, but it was certainly helpful information, and both Matt, Serge, and Carrie and Roman were very helpful in putting this together.
And then, and I will dig deeper at the public hearing, but I, just real quickly, political speech, or if we'll remember the State Farm sign.
Oh, yeah.
Down at Oak Road, right down the street from Tom's House.
Two of them.
Can we restrict that? Because that was against what our sign ordinance would normally allow. I didn't believe we could. However, it was a business, we can't restrict that now.
What I would suggest is if the council has specific concerns about particular changes to how we handle signs, that'd be done separately from this exercise. This exercise is purely, let's make sure that we're complying with that Supreme Court case. I think that anytime you do a sign ordinance update, it's going to be controversial. It's without question, it's one of the most controversial sets of latest regulations that you possibly can do. I've been through two of them in my career, they take 12 to 15 months if you want to do them the right way, you need to have involvement not only from the planning board, the council, edcac here, you need the business community involved, you need the legal people involved, it's a wide range of people that you need to bring to the table in order to get some agreement on what we should do. You're never going to get all those people in the same room to agree on what a good sign ordinance is.
We had that here.
Already.
Don't forget, the guy was also using the house as a billboard.
That's correct. And that's why I didn't think we could restrict that, I didn't believe, I would have not. I saw it as pure political free speech.
Like I said, Jillian and I were very careful, and this was, this was also an exercise for me, this was one of the first ordinance amendments that I've actually delegated to my staff, so it was kind of me letting go on something that I've done for 17 years. And Jillian did a very nice job with this, and I really think that she paid close attention to not making anything that would change significantly how we treat signs today because we don't want to get into that kind of fight. We really just want to concentrate on being compliant with that Supreme Court case.
So really, both of them are compliance issues.
Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Tim. Thanks to you and Jillian for the wordsmithing that you did, there was a lot of changes that must have gone blind during it. Regarding the, regarding the new ADU, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Section two dash, page 2-10, number E, well, letter E, the ADU should not exceed 1,000 square feet in area, is that a cap or is that what's been determined to be reasonable?
That's, that's part of the new state law, was that it basically said you can't, I'll find the law here, that's, the 1,000 feet came out of the new statute.
Do you know how they arrived at 1,000 feet?
I couldn't tell you how they came up with it. This, this bill, Senate Bill 146, basically languished in the legislature for almost a year and a half. I started discussing ADUs with the planning board and the zoning board at a joint meeting in 2014, came up with an idea that we were going to do two different things, but the legislature started working on this law and we all agreed, let's wait to see what the legislature comes up with. They just finally, in March, came up with something. But in terms of the, the statute says that you cannot restrict to a size of less than 750 square feet. What we did in coming up with the 1,000 square foot number is we took, I took a look back at what we've typically been looking at for the special exceptions that have been going to the zoning board. We're allowed to do up to 25% of the gross living area, and generally speaking, they're usually somewhere on either side of 1,000 square feet, so that was the reason for coming up with that number.
Okay, okay, and then the, the second question on par, under letter G, the property owner must occupy one of the two dwelling units.
Yes.
How do we enforce that?
That is, again, part of the state law, that essentially in order to do an ADU, you have to commit yourself to living in one of the units. Essentially, the legislature doesn't want these to turn into absentee landlord situations where somebody's renting both the house and the ADU and not living on the property. That language, we are requiring the recording of a new restrictive covenant. Previously, our restrictive covenants dealt with family relationship. Legal counsel has told us those are not valid and you cannot enforce those under the new state law. So what we're doing with this new covenant is basically saying that, yes, you can do an ADU, but no, you can't convert your property into a condominium or other form of ownership. It needs to be recorded along with the conversion that you now are committed to remaining as a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit with an owner occupying one of the two units.
So are you saying that the property is going to be in the name of Mr. and Mrs. Smith as opposed to Smith nominee trust?
That doesn't restrict if you wanted to set up a trust, it's as long as the people who are that trust are residing on the property, it's enforcement is going to be, enforcement is going to be difficult.
I agree.
There's no question about it, and we're trying to deal with the language that the statute put on us. Ultimately, these restrictions don't technically go into effect until June of next summer.
Right.
But because we had been working on this, again, since the late 2014, we felt it was appropriate to bring it forth today.
And how did they arrive, the other question that I had in looking at 212 regarding the covenant for condominiums, how did they get to a level of having concern over, over an accessory dwelling unit being condoized? Because that's a, that's a whole legal process to create a condominium.
It is, and that was something that I actually borrowed from, I believe it was the Town of Wyndham, has been doing this in their accessory dwelling unit ordinance for some time, and it really just addresses the concern that you end up with a quote-unquote multifamily lot when you do a condominium conversion, whereas those typically aren't permitted based on the lot size that would be required for an ADU in a single-family home. So that, this was our way of trying to address that, to make sure that we didn't get into a situation where we could create a future nonconformity.
You don't forget that there was a lot of noise about conversion of properties in the condominiums.
Yes.
In various parts of the state, not in the region, and it may have been.
I went through, in the mid-2000s, we did a ton of condo conversions in Long Island.
Yeah.
They had duplexes and the condos, condexes.
Right.
We probably dealt with 50 of them over the course of my time in Long Island.
The condexes make sense, I just, I can't picture single-family house, you know, apartment accessory above a garage.
I don't anticipate anybody would do it, but this is just a way of making sure that it doesn't happen.
No, I get it, I get it, okay.
And the other thing with this, the other thing with the square footage, I like the way you made that change, because the one ZBA meeting I voted at was, was an accessory dwelling unit, and.
The last one?
Yeah. And there was a fair amount of discussion about how they complied with the 25% of the living area in the original building. Do you count the porch? Do you count this? Do you count that? Saying it at a square feet.
Three season porch versus a four season to a two season.
You know, setting it up as 1,000 square feet, no less than, no more than, don't have that argument.
It was, it was an attempt to simplify the process.
Yeah, it's a lot easier for the property owner, too.
Yeah. Thank you, Tim, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Any other questions? Saying none. Saying none. Okay, I would like to have a motion, please.
You need to open a public hearing.
No, we need to move to a public hearing.
Sure, you're trying to catch me, aren't you? And it worked. I'd like a motion.
We promote this to a second hearing and public hearing.
Correct.
Second. The 13th of the 27th?
13th.
Does that give us enough time?
Apparently.
Yeah, the 13th.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Dan Dwyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 7-0-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Request to create a new position of Assistant Maintenance Manager in the wastewater division of Public Works, presented by James Taylor, Assistant Director of Public Works Wastewater, and also Director of Public Works, Kyle Fox.
Good to hear.
Gentlemen, go right ahead. All right. Eileen, go right ahead. As an introduction.
Yes. Basically, as our equipment at the wastewater treatment plant, as you know, we have done significant upgrades to the plant and will continue. We have at least one more phase that needs to be done. And in order to keep a person, to continue working for us, as they're being trained on this very specific equipment, we needed to have a different position that would be more, more well-trained and more sophisticated in terms of specific types of equipment. And that's what this request is about. Is that pretty good?
Anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just add that everything Eileen said is the primary focus for this. An additional component to this, as we heard in the EDCAC presentations earlier this evening, much like the larger companies in town that are having trouble attracting and retaining specialized skilled help, our wastewater plant has the same problem, losing help to Nashua and Manchester, bigger communities. We train them, and they leave us to go elsewhere. So that's a, that's a critical component to this request as well. For the specifics of the, the request, I'll turn it over to Jim Taylor, and we'd be happy to answer questions afterwards.
So in the interest of time, I'll be brief. Get to the football game. So the treatment plant really began 1970, so it's been in operation for 46 years. If you go back to the beginning, it was a very basic facility, had 28 employees. Over time, through automation, computerization, we're now have 21 employees. We have a three-shift operation, we're down to a single shift. I kind of liken it to a car that was made in 1960s. You know, you could pop the hood, you could see the engine, you know, spark plugs, and not much there. You pop a hood today, you know there's an engine there somewhere, buried beneath, you know, wires, and it's all run by a computer. So the treatment plant is really no different, but it also means that you need a higher skill level, which is what we're hoping to do with this position request. So we, we worked on this for quite a while, and we think it would be a very valuable addition. We also worked with Eileen and Sharon to come up with an appropriate labor grade that we think would hopefully attract someone with the skill level that we look, we're looking for. And it would be a bridge between our maintenance manager and the maintenance staff, so that it's primarily a working position, but would have the ability, if the maintenance manager is on vacation or happens to be out for any reason, they could fill in to order parts, provide training to the existing staff. So we see it more as a, kind of a bridge position also.
Okay, any questions or comments? Saying none, I'm open to a motion.
Ma'am Chair, I move to adopt the creation of a new position of Assistant Maintenance Manager in the Wastewater Treatment Division of Public Works.
Seconding.
Motion made by Tom Mahon, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 7-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Gee, too bad there isn't a Patriots game every week. Oops, we need something from Paul.
If we could just, you already voted, but another, just the labor grade and the range, salary range you're approving for the position.
As presented.
As presented.
It's actually, that's what I was going to add, just for the, for the public record to know that the recommended labor grade for the position is grade 13, with a salary range of $21.36 to $30.33.
Now, does that have to be within the motion? We can amend the motion to include that.
Or just do another motion. Or reconsider.
Reconsider?
Second.
Okay.
Just add those.
We have to vote on reconsider.
Yes.
So all those in favor of reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, 7-0-0. Now, at this point, does it go back to the original?
No, we have to make a motion.
Another motion. Okay, I'm open to that.
Move the creation of a new position of Assistant Maintenance Manager. Where's all that? First page, I can read that. Assistant Maintenance Manager in the Wastewater Treatment Division of Public Works, and to adopt a labor grade 13 with salary range of 21.36 to 30.33. The current open position funded it, or I'll leave that out, and let them make up their own mind about how they want to deal with that issue.
Second.
Okay, so same configuration, Tom Mahon, Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
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 Yes, aye.
Okay, 7-0-0. Excellent. Okay, I feel like I need to speed talk with Dan here.
Oh, ignore them. Just ignore them.
Okay, this is the new agenda item that was added regarding a press release. I just want it for public, I know the council knows this, but I want to make sure the public's aware upon which this is all based, okay? There was a governor's conference call on the drought on September 16th, and this, I've summarized it, and we'll make that public. Basically, the state wanted to initiate a statewide drought emergency. There are various facts, and I'm just going to sort of try to highlight what they are. In attendance was, I was with the MVD, so Ron Minor, Lon Woods, Jill Lavoie. Bill, I don't know where you were on the conference call, were you at home?
I was at home.
Okay. And Chief Curry was also on it as well, as well as obviously many people from the state. And there were various presenters. So some of the facts, the state's major concern is related to private wells. They are very concerned about these wells becoming dry during the winter, and we will talk about that in a little bit more detail as we go on. There has been and will continue to be major financial issues with farmers, especially dairy farmers. They project a 20% to 80% crop loss, and dairy farmers have been particularly hit because they're using up all their feed. And they normally have a second growing season, and they haven't been able to do that, so that their bins are dry, they have to buy their feed for the winter, so that's going to have a financial implication. Some private wells have already run dry, and some fire departments have been trying to help fill them. But the state is saying, don't do that, because there's a possibility of cross-contamination. National Weather Service sees no changes long-term and foresees continued drought. At the present, the state is 16 inches below normal precipitation for the year. Even if the precipitation occurs during the winter, after the ground is frozen, the drought conditions will really not be resolved, even till spring, and then if it's too fast, we all know what happens. All goes to the strab dream in the river. Towns are encouraged to establish lawn watering restrictions. Emergency water supplies, again, primarily for private wells, and I can't stress this enough, one of the things we have to discuss is what we can do to be able to make that known as much as possible. That's really the priorities for the state. It's also important for the private well owners to know that there are state and USDA funds available for those in need to be able to drill their wells deeper. Push water conservation to prepare for winter, and I'll add more on that. We also should discuss starting consideration of emergency plans in case the drought continues through the winter, especially for those private well owners. There was also a discussion about wildfire occurrences and future concerns. There was much discussion about the impact of the drought on firefighting capacity and increased labor time and costs. Putting out a brush fire during the drought often takes two to three days of continued vigilance. They talked about how the moisture, the first eight inches of the ground, the less moisture there is, the longer the fire, the fire takes to, because the more vigilance that the fire department has to stay there to make sure it doesn't reignite a day or two later. So they wanted to make sure that all town governance were aware of the financial implications should that happen. Okay, so the next point is, after that, there was a discussion with MVD, and what I did is I drafted a press release. We came to the conclusion that we both had the same, we wanted the same outcome, and we also agreed to methodology, which is what you're going to see in the press release. So maybe we could work together and come up with one press release. On Monday, I did attend the MVD meeting, because I wanted to make sure that I was there if there were any questions. They had some tweaking, and I want to thank Tom Mahon, because he helped me tweak the original draft, and I appreciate it. You helped, Tom, with that. And just to let you know, one of the things I learned from the MVD meeting is that they, you previously knew that they had approved getting bids for the booster to attach to Pennechuck. Well, the bids were in, and they chose one of the bids, and they approved the construction. And it is projected that that booster should all be installed by the beginning of December. Okay?
Now, I want you to be clear that that's an emergency source.
Correct.
Only.
Correct. But it's nice to be able to have that now, and right. Yeah, it's not going to automatically be turned on. You're absolutely right. Okay, so I'm going to read the press release, if I can find it. And again, the town council has received this draft for consideration. Drought press release, which would be, if approved, be released tomorrow. On September 16th, the town of Merrimack and Merrimack Village District personnel participated in a statewide phone conference with state officials to discuss the drought emergency across the state. During this conference, the state of New Hampshire recommended increased water conservation measures. In support of this recommendation, the town and the MVD encourage all residents, businesses, and industries to use personal water conservation measures. In addition, the MVD will be instituting further restrictions on outside watering beginning Monday, September 26th, from twice daily to once daily, and that once daily is 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. only, odd and even days. All town properties and facilities will abide by these restrictions and recommendations. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has developed a link for drought information, and that link is on the press release. And this press release, if approved, or whatever manner it is approved, will be on the, what's the matter you're looking? Okay, will be on the town website, and that link will be visible. It's also going to be put on the MVD website. Residents are also alerted that continued drought conditions may create supply shortage concerns for winter water availability, especially for users of private wells. The town of Merrimack and MVD are strongly encouraging all private well owners to also limit their external watering uses. Private well owners need to be aware that if the drought continues, their well levels may be limited and may create a concern as the winter progresses. We also strongly encourage all businesses and industries to establish water conservation efforts in order to assist the community in meeting their water needs this winter. This notice, as well as the New Hampshire DES, and there are two documents we're going to attach on the website as well, drought emergency in New Hampshire, recommended measures for New Hampshire residents, and also, quote, 2016 drought guidance for homeowners on private wells. These documents, as well, the press release, will be placed on the town of Merrimack and Merrimack Village District websites. Updates will be posted as they become available. What I'd like to do is just, let's talk about the press release, and I do have additional information I can provide, unless it comes up in the conversation. Yes, Tean?
It's a weird conversation to have, because I found out after talking to you, that I made like typical my answer, I was like, it's my house, my property, my well, the state can't tell me I can't water my grass. And we looked into it, and you said, yes, they can.
We have a law.
I was like, what?
RSA 41 calling.
I did a double take.
11-d.
So the fact is that the law says that our governing body can prevent private homeowners from, if they declare a drought situation, they can tell us. Now, as we all know, the most things that get people are laws that can't be enforced, or you actually do enforce it, that you would actually have a team, you'd pay, whether it was the police or fire or other government employees, would go around spying on homes and seeing if your water was on. That's literally, that's the only way you could enforce it, you'd have to put money into a inspecting team. So I'm not in favor of it on those bases.
This is not a ban, this is strongly recommended.
It's strongly recommended at this time, and I can totally onboard on where it's going. But my sarcastic answer is, you can't teach common sense. If a homeowner is, is going to continue to water his lawn on his private well, and it goes dry, that's on you. You know, if you kind of go call up a well company and dig a new well, I don't know how to respond or how to enforce that.
I think our responsibility, I agree, I totally understand. Our responsibility, the responsibility at this point, is to do whatever we can to inform them.
Inform, absolutely.
And to educate them, and that's part of what this is.
Yep.
And you're right, if we went into a ban, which is what we could do eventually, or maybe do it now.
It may lead to that, to the future times of a future drought continuing, that might be exactly what happens.
No, Jackie was first.
Jackie, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, I also think that we should explain to people that it isn't their well. I have an artesian well on our property, but I'm drawing from an acrofer that is, that might reach all the way to your house. And it might be the same acrofer that you draw from, and I think that we should be aware that, that we don't own the whole acrofer. Maybe somebody with a dug well could, could actually make that claim, but I doubt it.
Understood. Tom?
I, in order to enforce something like that, we would have to have some kind of mechanism on the books, and I don't believe we have anything like that on the books right now, where we would be responsible for enforcing a total water ban of some sort. Okay, so to deal with your concern, okay, there's, there's no enforcement mechanism out there, because we have no ordinance that deals with it.
We'd have to develop.
And we'd have to put one together, and that will take until Christmas, literally, just because of the timing of the meetings and the hearings and the writing and all the other stuff.
Christmas 2017.
Well, maybe. Depends on how recalcitrant you want to be. But anyway.
I mean, look at the calendar, Christmas is two months away.
I know, I know. So anyway, that, that's part of the issue. I've had my, I used to be on a well. I've got three wells on my property. Okay? And I, I, one year, we pumped it, we pumped it dry because of, you know, rain, you know, no rain. I think the year after, I went on to the, the MVD system, but that was for another reason. It wasn't because the thing went dry. The thing recovered reasonably quickly, but for a day or two, we were okay. But anyway, it's, it's one of those situations. And if I'd gone to the town at that time today, I got no water, and they're going to say, that's your problem, you know, because that's your responsibility. So the other thing is that I would like to gauge the council's interest in banning all outdoor watering at town facilities and properties, to sort of set an example, if you will. Besides that, walking in here tonight, seeing the, seeing the parking lot getting watered was rather disheartening. So, you know, I don't know if, if you.
Does that mean fields as well?
I, yes. We've been through droughts before. Fields were not irrigated in those years when we've had the droughts before. And the seasons, except for the Saturday, the Saturday games, are going to be winding down over the next.
Not for soccer. Soccer goes quite a lot.
If I could, Tom, I wasn't aware of that, and I, mid-September, most people shut off the irrigation system, so if ours was on site, that's got to be an oversight, because by now, there shouldn't be no more watering, right? I mean, it's time.
I think there would have to be a decision.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm just, all I'm asking for is what your consideration is.
Oh, I'm hearing it, and I'm giving it to you, I would. I would ask the town manager that we get the sprinklers shut off for the rest of the year.
Okay, there's, you've got to remember, though, that there is a, there is an investment that people have put in, money in the fields and stuff like that. I did talk, which I might as well do it now. I was going to tell you later, I spoke with Shannon Bads from the school to inform her that we were going to have this discussion in.
Oh, sure.
In a pending release. And also spoke with Kyle to try to get some feedback from people. The school had concerns about their fields, I'll talk about Kyle in a moment, has concern about the fields and the damage that will be done if they cannot at least maintain. But a lot of the similar things that they're saying is also true for us, is my point. And then I spoke, and Kyle had mentioned that they already have an agreement with MVD, and I did verify that with Ron Minor, that because their fields are used from 5:00 to 8:00 at night, could they go from 8:00 to 11:00? MVD had already approved that. So I offered that for the school as well, that if MVD approves it, because they use the fields from 5:00 to 8:00.
Yep.
And MVD did approve that. So those would be two exceptions that the MVD would be fine with. So I guess my only concern is, I think there are certain pieces of town property that, yeah, I'd feel fine, but the fields?
Well, it seems like there'd only be a few more weeks to go anyway. I mean, they're going to be off fairly shortly, if you look at the calendar.
And I also talked to, verified that the school's irrigation systems are programmed, and they do shut off, because nothing bothers me more to see watering when it's raining out. And they do.
Have they finally fixed that issue?
Apparently, they did.
They said they've had that.
Yeah, because I verified with them, but they are going to override. And they will do, they will try to do what they can do to minimize it. I mean, I'd be more responsive, Tom, if you wanted to limit it to like twice a week, rather than stopping altogether. I mean, that's.
Well, not, you know, like I said, I think the lawns around here for the town properties, I don't think we should continue to water them.
I don't want to speak for you, Tom, because you're very capable of doing that yourself. And I know somebody who got in trouble for that before, but I, you're talking about the town hall complex and areas like that.
Police department.
Right, where, and I would agree with that. I think with the investment in these play ball fields, there aren't a lot of them, as far as I'm aware, I don't think there are a lot of them watered anyhow, maybe I'm mistaken. But I think it could be detrimental to stop doing that, but I think that.
Well, the soccer fields at Reed's Ferry are now irrigated where they weren't before.
Yeah.
Can we ask a question of Kyle?
Sure, Kyle, would you mind?
Kyle, there aren't, how many ball fields are actually having a sprinkler system in town?
What do we?
The town-owned fields that have irrigation are Bishop Field, Vets Park, Vice Field, Gibson Field, and Reed's Ferry Fields.
More than I thought, then.
Reed's Ferry, I wasn't aware.
Veterans Park draws it off of Natick Lake. That's the one that's not on the Merrimack Village District system.
And that's monitored, is it not, for the water level? We know, are we, do we know how that is at this point, the lake level?
We know the lake is pretty low at this point.
Yeah.
Are the school field, the other school fields, like the middle school, upper elementary, are they?
I couldn't speak to the school fields.
That's center of the schools. Those are the fields that they.
But it's the same waters, you know?
Jackie, how's Babusak Lake?
Low.
I mean, real badly low?
I don't think so, no, no.
No, just generally low?
Reed's Pond is down about six to 10 feet from when I drive by and look at it. I mean, you know.
Oh, Reed's Pond, yeah, I've noticed that seems very low.
Speaking with the Lake Natick folks, they said it's about, down about 12 inches.
Yeah, I think Babusak is too about that.
And just to let you know, I did speak with Ron Minor from MVD, and he gave me assurance that if they were concerned about, an increased concern about water supply, that he would contact us immediately. They are working with Garrett, Emmering Garrett.
Yeah.
And they work closely, and Emmering Garrett is, did verify, in fact, after the MVD meeting, we'd spoken to him. And he said Merrimack, compared to a lot of other towns, is in much better position because we restarted those restrictions so early.
Right.
And that they do not have any immediate concern, but they would notify us as soon as their concern increased. So, yes, Jackie?
Oh, yeah, I just, I had a comment that I realized that the playing fields are also for the children not to get hurt. You know, that you want the grass to be cushioned. It's always partly a practical consideration, not just aesthetic. But I don't like to say the good old days or anything, but my kids never played on watered fields. And I think, I would hope that the officials of the NYA, for example, and all, just use their, a little bit of common sense, and it doesn't have to be kept, we're not asking them to stop watering altogether perhaps, but just merely doing the minimum necessary.
Right, we were, you know, cooperating with us, follow the same restrictions. In fact, MVD, after whatever is approved tonight, will be sending out notices, they, any industrial or business who are on MVD, they'll send out the information about the restrictions as well.
Oh, that sounds an interesting issue because the south end of Route 3 is all Penetech.
Yeah. And they're off the river.
Yeah. Which is low.
Which is low. Finley?
I think as far as the private wells, I'm not interested in, you know, if we get to the point for a watering ban, I'm not really interested in policing that to that hardcore extent. I think, though, that people who do have wells, they're made aware, I'm on.
You need to talk closer.
If, thank you, sorry. If, you know, if they're made aware, I mean, I think a lot of people who have wells don't contemplate running out. They think of town water, and they, you know, they don't worry about it. But I think when they really think about it, they're not going to want to run out. And so I suspect the vast majority will do the responsible thing. So I think getting the information out is very important, and I don't know how to continue to do it for a period of time.
Yeah, like, we can use Nixle to send out messages, right? We can use the signs at the transfer station, and once Merrimack Rock's done, we could change that, the way there's a restriction, we put that, maybe devise something about private wells. I mean, I'm open, and really, I guess my sense is that we're responsible for notifying them, helping them appreciate the importance of it, how strongly it's recommended. But what they do about it is their call. Yes, Eileen?
Paul just told me, we just got our new sign, the new sign.
Oh, so we.
So we're just getting trained on it, right, Kyle, on how to operate it and regulate it? So it's another message board sign. So we'll be able to have two that are movable.
Okay, could I ask that we separate, can we make a decision about the press release? And then we consider, Tom, any additional restrictions you want to put on? Can we separate it that way?
Well, no, I just think that, I think that press release as it stands is probably okay. I just think that we can move the town in a different direction under a separate action, separate motion or instruction to the town manager.
Do we need a motion?
She's heard the discussion.
For this press release as presented? Okay, could I have a motion to release this press release as written?
Second.
Tom, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. So Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mayhem. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
7-0-0. And do you want to make any other motion?
Is it necessary, or? I mean, if it's necessary, I think Kyle already knows.
Yes, Eileen?
I wasn't going to say that, but I just want to make sure that people understand that they really should pay attention to this. This is a statewide declared drought emergency situation, and that they, you know, they need to look out for their own best interests, as Dan has said, as it relates to their own private wells and that kind of thing. Because this isn't just a, and also, it has absolutely nothing to do with Wells 4 and 5, or PFOA, or anything like that. It's a statewide drought emergency, and people need to be aware of it and be fully, try and be fully compliant with it because it's in your own best interest.
Yeah, when you look at the map, we're in the extreme.
Well, we're in the border of extreme and severe.
Tom just told me, that's what I was going to say, if the camera just shows this map, just so everybody in town is aware, red is extreme, and Merrimack is in the severe, and then there's moderate. So above us, it's moderate, but we are definitely in the severe zone, so.
Thank you, Fiona. Now, the DES, the DES website, that's going to be on the press release, which will be on our website, shows the link to that.
Okay.
It's an excellent map.
In fact, Rochester Today banned all outside watering. They're in the extreme.
Rochester did?
Yeah.
And if I can add, just to Jackie, just so you know, I put away my hoses last week. So they're, I'm practicing what I'm preaching.
Okay, what about the town? Should we go?
I didn't.
They need some guidance from us, right?
Just the fields.
Just the fields.
Do we have any sense as from Kyle or from the school as to how much longer we're going to be needing to water the fields?
I did not receive that from the school.
Probably about the same, though, right?
Yeah, probably.
Typically, we water deep into October. One of the difficulties we have with the ball fields is because they're so used so heavily, they get very stressed, and the fall season is really the only time we have to get new grass to grow. So we really try each year to kind of pamper them in the late fall. Given the conditions, though, I completely understand if we can't do that this year. So we're prepared to react to whichever way the council decides.
Okay, I, it's the investment that I'm worried about. My neighbor, who has a beautiful lawn that is invested in, a brand-new lawn, wants to make the things survive. They should water when they're allowed to during this time where we're allowed once every other day or whatever. I don't water my lawn because I tell my wife to look from the curb, don't look from the upstairs, and everything's good that way. But for somebody who has a heavy investment, that's a little different. And that's where I see our fields. It is an investment, and in order to protect them, I think Kyle speaks from experience over the years, so.
But the rest of the town.
Right, the PD, our town hall complex, they're not walked on, they'll come back in the spring nicely anyhow.
Yeah. And they're in good shape, so they should be able to tolerate the absence for, before they go dormant.
Right. So I'm aboard with that.
Okay, so is that enough of a, okay, excellent. Okay. Where are we? Now, okay, on to the next item. We don't need anything else, right? We're all set?
No, please. Can I just clarify real quick? So the 9:00 to midnight is okay for the fields?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it's three hours, MVD was saying.
But everything else gets shut off?
Absolutely, yeah, do it first thing in the morning.
And if there's a change, we'll let you know, but yes.
And we'll also advertise the information on our Public Works Facebook page as well.
Perfect. So you can steal some stuff from our, because Becky's going to be getting a lot of stuff.
Okay.
Okay, last item, MS 434 review submitted by town manager Eileen Cabanel. Town council will be presented with the details of the undesignated fund balance as it relates to the 216 MS 434.
Okay. Every year, there are several forms that the town and the school district and the MVD, et cetera, have to submit to the state, and the assessing office have to submit to the state in order to just set the town's tax rate. So you go through the budget process, that form gets done, it's called the MS 2. And then there's a revenue 1, which are non-tax revenues that include things like motor vehicle permits and all that kind of thing that go to offset the tax rates. Then there is the MS 1, which is the total value of the town, and some various other forms. But what this one is, is that the town council needs to make a decision as to what they want to do with fund balance. So basically, this is our undesignated surplus. There are many purposes for an undesignated surplus. One of the ones that I like it for is because when, there is a period of time when people are actually earning interest on bank accounts, it can be a source of, every year being a source of revenue to offset your taxes in terms of interest income. So that's a good thing. And also, there is a recommendation from the, usually with bond rating agencies, which we don't necessarily use, but it's a good guideline, to be anywhere between, actually, eight and 15% of your annual revenue. So, or expenditures, which, because they balance. So what the Town of Merrimack has adopted is a policy by which we need to comply with being within 4% to 8% of our annual revenues or expenditures. So basically, what it is, is the whole town's expenditure budget plus the net school budget, and then the county. And then you take all those things together, add them together, and you multiply it by 4% or 8%, and that tells you where your fund balance should be for Merrimack. So over the past few years, we have, we were dangerously low at one point. It doesn't show it on your second page here, but at one point, we were in the 2% range, I think, when I first got here five years ago. And so we've been gradually increasing the fund balance as to a more healthier range. This year, we had some anomalies in our revenues and our expenditures in a good way, whereby some of the revenues came in significantly higher than we had expected, and some of the appropriations had come in significantly lower than we had expected. And what happens to that is that when there's excess revenue beyond what was budgeted, or unexpended expenditures, the two of those things go, come together, and they get added to fund balance. And that happens automatically. This form gives you the opportunity to make some choices about what you want to do and what level of fund balance that you want to be at. So if you look at your, this front memo here with the seal on it, you can see that at the beginning of last fiscal year, we had a fund balance of 5.2 million dollars, which represented a fund balance of about 6.6%. And again, keeping in mind the 4% to 8%. So that put us kind of in the middle of where we would be. During this current year, we had additions to fund balance, as I said, because of some unusual things. One was a very high amount of motor vehicle permit revenue, approximately $800,000 more than we had budgeted. Building permits were approximately $80,000 more than expected. Highway block grant, an extra $15,000 interest on investments, approximately $60,000. And overlay, we had budgeted as an offset to expenditures, 100 and whatever. budgeted as an offset to expenditures, 100 and whatever, 2, 375, and it came in $190,000 less than we had expected to grant in abatements. So that comes to about approximately $1.1 million in excess revenues. Then in terms of appropriations, once again, as we talked about at the last meeting, and, and these numbers are updated because we have had the audit. So all of the accounts payable and accounts receivable and all the accruals and all those kinds of things have been done, so these are, numbers are finalized. So again, the police department with the changing over of significant retire, numbers of retirement and new people coming in onboard at lesser salaries, there was an extra $235 or so thousand dollars in there. The fire department with what has already been taken out for the, the roads and all that that was done at the prior meeting, still has another $18,000 in there, again, from new staff. A lot of, a lot of firefighters retired and we hired newer ones, new ones with, with lesser salaries. And in DPW administration, there was a significant period of time where we didn't have a DPW director, which we just had almost the whole year, just interim directors. And so that saves a lot on just, just your health insurance. So, so that comes to approximately $356,000 or $7,000 for a total of increase of about almost $1.5 million added to last year's surplus. So last year, again, undesignated surplus was five, approximately 5.2 million. These additions that I just gave you to revenues and expenditures, added another approximately $1.5 million to the surplus, which was already at 6.06%. And so the, the fund balance is estimated, again, with very minor, minor, minor tweaking, to be at six point, almost 6.7 million dollars. You then, during the budget period, decided to use $225,000 of that undesignated fund balance for that one-time, 53rd-week payroll. So I'm gonna subtract that out of, of that number. So the projected fund balance, as of December, as of the fund bal, projected fund balance for June 30th, 2016, is 6.4, 4, $6,449,357. And that puts it at, it's a fund balance of 7.19%. And I'll just repeat again, the Merrimack's ordinance calls for between 4 and 8%, and we're now over 7. So we, we thought that it was appropriate for you to have the discussion as to where you want to be. We, Paul has written down some, some information from the fund balance retention policy on some of the things that you might, reasons why you, you would use the fund, some of the fund balance. And also listed below here, some of the things that have been discussed in the past. Because if, if you want to use the fund balance, it's always a good idea to use it on something either for tax relief, and I, I want to stress this part right away, is in terms of tax relief, the fund balance, if you use it, you should really spread it over a certain amount of years so you don't see spikes in the tax rate. Because you, it goes down and then automatically the following year, it automatically goes way, right back up. So, you know, if you decide to use some of that for reducing the tax rate, I would recommend that you do it over a period of time, keeping in mind that you can only, you know, you can only represent one year. You don't know who's gonna be on the council next year. So, so anyway, as I said, Paul has written down some other things aside from use of fund balance that, something wrong, Bill?
Bill, do you have a question?
Just asking the question of, the, we're not permitted under state law to have a rainy day fund. We can't set aside this in order, and specifically designate it for property tax relief. It's not allowed. So we have to rely on.
So be on the wing, yeah?
Yeah. We have to rely on the unreserved fund balance and, and take a look at the unreserved fund balance. You know, the state has a rainy day fund that they use, other places, other states, and, and other jurisdictions have, have the ability to reserve the money to hold on to it, to do that kind of stuff, but not in New Hampshire. It's just, it's just the way they, just the way it's set up.
Finley?
Do you mind if I just finish the rest of this?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so what I was saying is that you can use it, you, you are the, the body that makes this decision. Nothing happens to fund balance except increasing of it by, by whatever occurs during the year, in anticip, unanticipated revenues and, and unexpended expenditures, that happens. But nobody can touch the fund balance except you as the governing body or in making recommendations to the public at, in next year's, following year's budget. So, so anyway, so you, you can use it to reduce the tax rate, or you can use it on some projects that you had planned on doing anyway, and that have been discussed in the past. So, and normally, they should be a one-time cost. Obviously, you don't want to establish a new operating revenue that's, that happens every year. An example of, of one-time cost would be to add money for, you know, road repaving. Instead of having 700 or a million dollars, you'd have whatever you wanted to add to it would be an idea. So anyway, I just leave you with that, and you can obviously discuss amongst yourselves what you want to do.
Finley, and then Jackie?
I, I, I fully embrace the 48%, the ordinance that was put out a few years ago, because I was fearful at the levels that it had been at. The 6%, about $5 million, it appears, is, I think is a reasonable level. I think we're approaching that 8%. And, and there are things that we could do for the following year's budget. I agree with Eileen's thought of, while we can't lock in a future council, I, if I come back here, I would have the same thought in mind to use a small portion of it to offset taxes. And I would anticipate following up with that. If necessary, for me, it's the stabilizing of the tax rate. And if necessary, I would be interested in doing that from year to year. We do have a fair amount in here now that's in excess of what I thought might be a reasonable amount. And so, and then as far as projects, I don't know if that discussion would come for next budget, I'm imagining. And I, I have a few ideas where we had a small conversation at a previous meeting. I was more concerned that if we were to try and do something like that now, wouldn't have had the, the transparency effect that I would want, that, that while we think everybody watches us, I don't know that they do. And if we were to take the liberty to do some.
Not tonight, for sure.
Yeah, some big project, it, I think it would have a negative effect on all of us, and we don't want that. We wanna, we want that to have its full vetting at future meetings and full conversations and hearings and everything.
Now, if there was, let me just ask a question, clarification. If we did take some of the money and want, for example, there's a suggestion about for the highway garage, that would need a warrant article, right? Come April?
Yes. And what I would rec, how that would kind of, how that would work would be that you would just allow this to, what we call, fall into fund balance, become part of the fund balance. And next year, you would bring that up to the public with the expenditure to, to be coming from fund balance.
Okay, gotcha. Jackie?
Yes, I'd like, please, a simple explanation between a rainy day fund and an undesigned, what do you call it, undesigned fund?
Well, the, the unreserved fund balance is what you accumulate, I don't know, through, it's the way you, you account for the money.
Like we did this year.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, a rainy day fund says you, you're setting that money aside usually for specific purposes. And, you know, and, and you can only withdraw the money from that fund for those purposes. So maybe, I don't know, I, I, you know.
Isn't that what a capital reserve fund is for?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, like a capital reserve fund?
Yeah.
Because I picture a rainy day fund.
It's not exactly an alias. It's, it's close to that, but it's not exactly, I don't know, Eileen, maybe you can, help me out here. Die!
I don't know that much about rainy day funds, except that they've gotten a really bad rap over the years because people have, you know, various governments have, you know, tapped into them for, for this and that. And unreserved fund balance is a very regulated thing. Once the money goes in, it cannot come out without some action being taken. And there are, you know, within our policy, there are guidelines, and it all has to be public and it doesn't just slip away. So for instance.
I was gonna say, rainy day funds could be.
Right, so like, to give you an example, this can only, these, these, a fund balance can only increase during a year based on the revenues and expenditures. Because if we don't bring in the adequate revenues, we have to drop our expenditures. We automatically drop our expenditures. So we never, we don't ever allow the fund balance to move down. It has to be done as an action from you. And one of the things that I think that is really important for people to understand about the fund balance is that many, many communities don't have an adequate fund balance. And what happens is that we obviously, our two biggest, the very, by far biggest source of revenue that we get every year is property tax revenue. And it comes in two chunks a year. So one big half comes in, and then the other half. And then there's not a lot of money coming in. And we still have to give money to the school and the, you know, a big amounts of money to the school and that kind of thing. So it just, and, and what other communities have to do is because, in order to keep up with that, you know, that uneven amount of revenue stream, is that they have to borrow on the short term. It's called tax anticipation notes. And many, many, many communities do that. And they borrow so that they have enough cash in order to meet their obligations throughout the year. So a fund balance not only can provide you with a revenue source from interest, when they're giving interest, or, and also prevent you from having to borrow on the short term to make, to make the, the expenses. Yeah, exactly.
Jackie, you all in?
Well, no, because I think, now I have another question. So we can use it as an income stream, not an income stream, but a, a stream of money to draw from, for pay pre-rolls and so forth, like in November.
Fund balances is basically determined once a year. So you, you have it revenues and you have expenditures, and you can spend the cash, but at the end of the year, it all has to come out even.
Yeah.
So yes, you're right, but it dips up and, and down during the year, as I expressed to you, that because of the, the revenue stream, but at the end of the year, it has to come out even.
Yes. Thank you.
Dan?
I want to make two points. When the law was passed about the 4 to 8, I felt, I was against it, but not in theory, but just I thought the range was too, was too high. I'm with Finley, approaching over 7% in keeping 6.4 million on the sidelines, to me, just seems to be too much. That's, I'm not personally comfortable with that number. I would like it between that 5 and 6 mark. If it's 4.7 million to 5.1 million, I, that's what I would like to see. Just, I wanted to make that point on that statement of, of the fund balance, on where I stand, what I think is a healthy number. So number two. Number two for me, I'm trying to just keep the, the theory of, of the year that we had. Eileen, I disagree with her about, about using several years or, or more than one years to give back as a tax relief. My priority is, is the, the statement I want to make is, through no fault of anybody's, we took in a lot more money than, than we needed from the taxpayers. So part, part of me says, therefore, I think we, I, we need to give it back, because we took more than what we needed. That being said, it's not about, I know this isn't gonna be a big ticket item with people. You know, if, for instance, I, I make a motion in theory to, to give back 700 to 800,000, because we took in excess of a million, that may be 2.4 cents. And then therefore, that may be only, you know, $15 a month on your taxes or 30. So it's not a big amount. But for me, what the important thing is, is the philosophy behind why I'm proposing it. We took in more than what we really needed from the taxpayers. So therefore, I deserve, they, they deserve to get it back this year, not 300,000 now and then 300 next year. And to feed off, let's say the pot was a million dollars, that we had a consensus of, oh, we have a million dollars to give back to the taxpayers because we took in a million dollars. But let's only give them back 300,000 this year, 300,000 next year. I feel like you're playing a little bit of a game with, with anticipated money and maybe we'll come up with another project that we could do something with. But it goes against what went wrong this year. What, what went wrong in a good way, we took in more than what we needed. But where I'm coming from is the philosophy of, I think, therefore, if we took more than we needed, we should give it back in a more timely fashion. Not, I'd be happy to discuss, I'd be in favor of two years, but the third year for me just seems too long, in, in theory of where I'm coming from. So that's, that's my story.
Finley, then Tom, and then Bill.
Anybody can kick it around if you want.
I won't let him kick you, then.
No, I would never, Dan. For me, it's always been about stabilizing the tax rate. That's what I've always talked about. I'd rather not see the spikes. When I came here in 2006, they liquidated a capital reserve fund, we had workers' comp refund that was pretty substantial, as I remember it. And there were one or two other items. So our tax bill, the tax rate went from, I don't remember exactly, like five bucks down to two bucks for that year, only to next year, go back up to five bucks. And it's that fluctuation that I, I'm concerned about, because that's what sets people into a, into a, you know, an uproar. So for me, while I see.
And I know, that's why I don't think, I don't think it would spike in this way, because it's only a million dollars and it equate to, two or three cents.
No, no.
No.
30 cents.
30 cents.
A million dollars is roughly 30 cents on the tax rate.
Or I'm looking at your chart wrong, then.
Yep.
Okay, then that's fine. Then it is what it is. That, that information doesn't change my philosophy and where I'm coming from. But as I had suggested, half and half, you know, two, two years was a bigger picture for me anyway to, if we were gonna give something back. But, all right, I gave my thing.
Because for a number, I was thinking the high side would have been 100,000 to use to offset taxes. I was, I, and I would entertain, I was thinking 50 to 100, and I, the 100 would have been the very high side in my, you know, in my thought process. But I understand where you're coming from. I just fear it into a roller coaster.
Tom? Oh. Eileen, did you want to answer?
Just, just to put things in perspective, I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to talk you out of anything. I just want you to understand what. out of anything, I just want you to understand what the perspective from, from a bond rating agency, not, not that we go out and get rated for bonds, but if somebody were to come in and look at our books, they would be looking for something like eight to 15%, not four to, not four to eight. They wouldn't be looking at that. They would say that that's not a healthy fund balance, eight is borderline. So, I'm just saying that it's not, the fund balance that we have is not an exorbitant one. I just want to put that in perspective, and I'm not discouraging you from using it to reduce the tax rate. If you were to ask me personally, which you have not, but I, as you know, I always have an opinion on everything, that, that I would feel comfortable with as much as 300,000 dollars per year to reduce the tax rate.
You're the bull part.
How about you, Paul? Don't disagree with me.
The big thing, the big thing is the stabilization of the tax rate, because honestly, like what Councilor Rothaus said, is that when you drop, we dropped down to $2.42 from $5.24.
The next year is--
And then the next year went skyrocketing.
Shock.
And everybody was, I, people came to my office, my escrow screwed up, my escrow screwed up, you guys, you screwed up my escrow by dropping it. They dropped my tax rate down, like, now I owe $1,000 at the end of the year. It's stabilization. If it's 100,000, it's 100,000. If it's 300,000, it's 300,000. But you've got to stabilize the tax rate over a number of years. You can't just take the million and throw it at somebody and say, here's a thirty, you can, here's a 30 cents tax increase, but if you do that, it's education, education, education with that, so.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I wanted to make one thing clear, Dan. We did not over-collect on the taxpayers of this town. Okay? We had excess, significant excess revenues.
Right.
Okay? So, we did not, we did not collect more money in the property tax than we needed to.
If I sounded that way, I didn't, I didn't mean to.
It sounded that way.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean to make it sound that way.
But, I mean, that's, that's a distinction, I think, that we need to make.
Very important.
And is often not made. You're always saying, oh, we're collecting, I used to get that on a budget committee all the time. We're doing this. No, we're not. Look at the revenues. Look at the revenue side of the sheet. Okay? That's where the money's coming from. And by the way, in those years, in the 90s, it was the same place. It was auto registrations, and it was the return of contributions. Okay? So, you know, it's not, we collected exactly what we needed to collect from, from the taxpayers, in terms of what we needed to operate the town. What happened at the end of the year was, there were other issues that involved the budget lapses that we talked about before. But that was 300,000 out of 30 million. Okay? And then it was a million dollars in additional revenues that we, that we got. And that, hey, you know, how long is that going to last, by the way? I'm already seeing the, the auto industry starting to rattle and shake here, because they've, you know, they've been offering these programs all along for these things, and, you know, there's only so many big trucks you can buy, you know, and replace. So, you know, it's just one of those things where, you know, and we end up living and dying by it. And that's one of the reasons why you want to have something in here, because next year, what happens if you're 250,000 short in what you projected? So, you know, I just, just in a friendly way saying, you know, it's not that we over-collected, we, based on the money, based on the numbers we gave to the Department of Revenue and Administration, they said, you can collect 72 million. We did. Okay? And between us and the school district, we spent 72 million. The revenue issue was the one that gave us the additional money that we have to put in this unreserved fund balance.
That is a major distinction.
Yeah.
Bill? Then Jackie.
Thank you. I agree with Finley and Dan. I'm very comfortable with the fund balance at 6%. I think it's, for the lack of better term, it's a very happy medium. Five million dollars ain't, you know, ain't nothing to wag a, wag a finger at. I think that's a very reasonable cushion for this community to have. So, then it begs the question, the 1.5, and how do we, how do we deal with that? And I'm certainly of the mindset right now that we have projects in place that we should be considering in January and February. But I also think we have an opportunity to stabilize the tax rate as well. When I came into the meeting tonight, the number that I had in my head was anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000 in tax relief back to the taxpayer, which is anywhere from 10 to 16 cents, depending on your amount. So, you're shaking your head, Eileen?
I'm just sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to figure these things out while you're, you're talking. I'm not disagreeing with you. I was shaking my head at Paul.
Oh, okay.
So, what, what, I just want you to be clear about, a very muddy subject, is that we have 1.4, almost 1.5 million dollar addition to fund balance, but you also use 225,000 of it, so we're really talking about--
1,273,000.
Something like that.
Correct. That's correct. So, I was, I was going to ask that question, so thank you, I appreciate that. So, based on, based on my arithmetic, I actually would like to move that the town council allocate 400,000 from fund balance for rate relief.
Second?
Okay, motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Dan Dwyer.
Which is a 12-cent reduction, based on the chart that Paul put together. And I think it's, if I could speak to the motion, I think it's enough of a bang to show, show the people that we care about how, where we're being allocated with their dollars, but I also think at the same time, it provides the level of tax stability that I think Eileen and Paul have kind of stressed to this council during previous budget discussions. So, I, to me, in my, in my eyes, I felt that was, based on listening to what people, I think that's reasonable.
You speak to it, Dan?
And to, and to second, because that's a number like, I can honestly tell you, I didn't come here tonight with any fixed number in my head, in four, sounds reasonable. So, I'm very open to hear what the rest of you have to say, a little lower, a little higher, but that number is, is a good starting point.
Jackie?
Oh, yes. I have a couple of comments. I do agree with Tom about the, it's the revenue that has come in more, and we collected the right amount of taxes. In good times, you do, you do things that you perhaps can't afford to do when the economy turns a little bit. We have projects, as, as Bill just said, that are under consideration, like a highway garage, for example. And I think that, I think it would be a mistake to put some of it back to the taxpayers when they didn't even really pay, overpay the taxes for it. And we have certain projects. One thing that I have admired about this town, before I got on the council and now, is that we are very lightly bonded. We're a cash-in-hand town. I think we should be very proud of that. And I don't mind putting it all into the fund balance, I really don't. But I think, I, I think, I disagree, perhaps I could be persuaded, but I think I disagree with returning any 15 bucks or 30 bucks. The last time this happened, maybe not the last time, but we raided, the town raided, and I don't think anybody here was above, the library fund, that people had painstakingly put aside for a library, and then wham, it's gone, and I had 30 dollars to spend on lunch. So, I, I, I think I disagree with that, that philosophy. I'd rather, if we can't think of anything good to spend it on, I can. Put it all in the fund balance then and decide later.
Can I, if you're--
And then, sure, response to that?
And I completely understand your, your point of view, Jackie, with that thinking, I really do. But I just wanted to make the note about the library fund was really harsh, only because it was a ballot question. So, when the, when the ballot questioned that year, when the town was asked, do you want the new library, and they said no, that, that account was set up for the CIP or for a new library. So, when the town said no, that, I believe, was what the reason why the money was returned.
No, no.
So, if it wasn't--
There was no library proposed that year. The article was to liquidate the fund, to liquidate the capital reserve fund.
That was what the ballot question was?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It was to liquidate the capital reserve--
And so, the voters said yes?
By one vote.
It's a crazy time, but--
But I just want to remember, it was a long time ago, I just want to make, get the story straight in my mind, because I couldn't, I couldn't remember.
There was a lot of, there were, there were a few people who expressed buyer's remorse on that one.
Finley?
I'm sorry, Paul.
I understand there's a motion on the floor, and I apologize, I tried to get this out before the motion was made. We have one taxpayer in town, just one of them. His tax bill is 1.7 million dollars. If they do not pay, that is part of why we have this fund balance, to help offset that, them not paying. Yeah, we'll get the money eventually, but that is to help offset. And that's just one taxpayer, and they're the number three largest taxpayer in this town. So, we have taxpayers that are larger that pay more, and that's basically why you use, why we set up the fund balance between 4% and 8% is because of some of those large taxpayers. Not saying they're not going to pay, I'm just saying it's, it's if they don't pay--
It's a protection.
It's protection, it's for cash flow purposes, insurance for later, if they don't pay. We'll get it eventually, because we can take tax dealing and other that stuff. But that is, I just want to give that example, and try to get that out before the motion, and I'm sorry, that was a motion.
It's a good point.
I would like to propose amendment to 300,000.
Well, the amendment's at 400 right now.
No, no.
Make it to 300.
Right. I would like to amend it to 300. If there's a second?
Second? Voice open to a second.
Can he, can he second his own?
Why not?
Okay. That's why I'm asking. Okay, so you are wanting to amend from 400 to 300. Tom Mayhew, seconded by Dan Dwyer. So, we have to vote on the--
Amen.
Amendment. All those in favor?
I just want to put out, I'm not going to harp anymore on the stabilizing of the tax rate, because everybody knows what I feel about that. I thought, I want to emphasize Tom's point, that this was, in fact, a revenue problem, unanticipated revenues that we had received.
In combination with appropriations.
Some, yeah. No, for sure. But the revenue component was huge. And so, I'm just thinking, a year down the road, that when, if revenues do dry up to a degree, the offset will be the property tax. And so, that makes it more difficult to maintain that balance that I, you know, that I'd like to try and do, for me. I won't, you know, I won't be supporting the amendment, I won't be supporting the original motion. I'd be more inclined to do a 200,000 mark, and in my, for me, if I ever, if I'm able to come back at some point, I would follow through with the same thought process the following year. And I'd rather, for me, I'd rather do it that way, because making up that difference, if the revenues are lower, for anticipating lower revenues, it's going to be made up by the property tax, so we're going to have to do some more serious, you know, looking at the budget at that point. So, it's just for me.
Are you talking about coming back in an afterlife?
I don't know, this conversation is--
Okay, so--
Can I just ask for clarification? If you don't support the 300, then you're, then we would be back to the 400 number?
And you wouldn't support that either.
And you're hoping that enough people vote against that, so that you can then come out with a 200 number?
Well, I mean, that's just where I am. I, yes, yeah.
I mean, because you could support the 300, and then turn around and make a 200 amendment, and then you'd at least be working with a smaller number, if it were to pass, than the 400 number. But I, I'm just, I don't know the philosophy, the best way to approach something like this, and that's why I'm asking the question. Just to try and--
Sure.
Because I, I think I'm on your team, I'd rather be at 200 or 250. But I don't know how to play these games when we've already got numbers out on the table, and if you--
A parliamentary game?
If you lose, then you're stuck with a bigger number, which you might lose the whole, the whole ballgame, instead of just part of it.
Yes, Dan.
Speaking, his name, the word game triggered, triggered a thing, and I'm not accusing, I never would accuse our management team of game-playing, because I honestly mean that. But as many of us know, in cities, towns, playing with their car registration money is, is a game for some people, not this town. I don't believe this town is, plays that. But if we, if I think outside the box, I can criticize my management team for giving us wrong numbers. Well, you under-inflated the budget. So, you know what, you know what I mean? And I don't want to have this discussion every year, you know, like, like when Tom, when you went up, you added that paving number, it was like the same thing. Well, well, maybe we've been anticipating too low of a number when it comes to our car registrations. This next budget will, will boost that number up, because this is a difficult conversation. We don't want to be brought up every year, oh, we got another million dollars that we weren't expecting. We don't, I personally don't want to have that every year. That means somewhere along our line, our bookkeeping or estimates aren't as good as they should be. So, I just add that in, because you're triggered.
You've triggered him.
Yes, and it, and it's still Lewis.
Well, and it is a budget.
Oh, an expedition.
But it, but it is a budget, and that's, and that's what we try and do. It's the crystal ball thing, and, you know, we, we gamble on the cost of things, we, and try and anticipate from history, and from financial thought, from the geniuses, as opposed to me, and it just didn't work out for our budgeting. But anyhow.
The, the way that the budget laws in New Hampshire are written, and the way they manage the setting of the tax rate, and the other issues involving how you handle your money, it's damn near impossible to do any kind of reasonable projection on your revenues. We've tried before, there's just no model that works, just because of the unpredictability and--
External forces.
Yeah, yeah, the unpredictability of the marketplace, and the restrictions that we have on us, that are enforced by DRA when we submit our budgets. Okay? It just makes it real tough to make those kinds of projections. You know, the, you would think that you could go downstairs, you could say, you know, how many one-year-old cars do you have, how many two-year-old cars, how many three-year-old cars? The information's there, but you've got to dig for it, take hours to do that, because you'd have to go each one, because they have no way to aggregate that. So, it's not--
Like, you'd think there'd be a software program already there, in there, where you could just kind of click it, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, and your predecessor, I beat him over the head a couple of times on the Budget Committee about, come on, you got to do better than this. You know? And part of the problem was that it's just, it's just a flaky situation, just because of the way that the laws are written, and they're not written for guys like us. You know, they're written for the smaller towns, Fitzwilliam and those guys.
Eileen?
I just, I'd like to say that I, I believe that this past year, we did under-budget for, for revenues on, on the motor vehicle side, because we were being cautious, we didn't, you know, I mean, they'd gone up significantly, and we didn't know if that was going to be maintained or not. And so, rightly so, Tom Kay, at this next, for, for this budget that we're in right now, not the one that we're talking about, which is last year's, suggested that we increase our revenue estimate for, for motor vehicle permits, so they'd be closer to where we actually came in at. But what happens is, if you have a situation where, you know, you have an unpredictable number like that, based on people's, based on people's, like the stock market, you know, I mean, what kind of faith do you have in, can you afford a new car, or a really expensive car, or what kind of deals are they having, whatever? As I was expressing before, if you don't bring in those revenues, you have to cut your expenditures. So, you budget all your expenditures, and if your, if your revenues are under-projected, then you have to, at some point, go in and cut your expenditures. Cut them, maybe significantly. So, we try and be, we try and be conservative on our numbers, to an extent, and, you know, I agree with Tom, that this past year, it could have been higher. So--
Call the question.
Okay, so we have presently a reconsideration for 300,000, right?
Amendment.
I'm sorry, whatever it's called.
Amendment.
Amendment. Thank you. It's at 300,000.
Robbery of rules is only a guideline.
Okay. All those in favor to that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those against, say nay. Okay, got to get these down. Okay, so, three, yay, no votes, is Jackie and Finley.
There was four ayes.
Well, that's, I had, okay, thank you.
I wondered, just for simplicity purposes, if you would just cut the whole thing, and then vote on 400, and then vote on 300, and then vote on 200, kind of thing, rather than do this complicated-
It wasn't complicated, it just happened.
We just did it.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, Bill, I don't think you voted, that's why I was confused.
You voted no.
Oh, I'm, was I supposed to know that this is no?
You're the chair, you're supposed to be omnipotent.
I guess I'm gonna, I guess I'm failing that, so-
All seen.
All seen.
Okay, so Jackie, Finley, and Bill were no, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and there were four yeses, so the motion passed.
Now, the amendment is done, now we go to the original motion.
Now we go, the main motion is now 300,000.
Did everyone get that? I'm not going to have to repeat it, all those in favor, say aye to the 300,000.
Aye.
Aye, moving, no, okay, so it's five, two, five yes.
Or you're no. I'm no.
I'm sorry, four yes, three no, and the nos would be Tom Koenig, Jackie Flood, and Finley Rothaus, is that accurate? Okay, so we've made one decision, which is 300,000 for tax relief. Okay, so if we take-
Which, by the way, is almost the budget lapse.
Yep.
Another way to look at it, yeah, the budget lapses are the-
Instead of entertaining amendments, we should just vote on the motion, and move on to the next motion.
Fine.
I just don't think we've ever done amendments before, have we?
Rarely.
Yeah, we normally, maybe a friendly amendment, but it's not to the point of voting on amendment, then voting on the-
That's why I, that's why I was confused as well, okay, so, if we, we had 1,273,000, right, 171, and if we take away 300,000, correct, Paul, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow you.
Nine, so there's 973,000. Okay, so if we don't do anything with it, that goes into unreserved fund balance, unless someone wants to-
Next year, next budget.
Will be the next budget for April, right? Okay, everybody understand that? So there's going to be 973,000, basically, put into unreserved fund balance, 300,000 for tax relief, that didn't have too much bloodshed, except mine.
Except who?
Mine. Okay, do you need anything else from us, Eileen or Paul?
Well, we'll submit tomorrow.
Okay, minutes for September 8, 2016.
Madam Chair, move the Thursday, September 8, 2016 Town Council meeting minutes, with the following modifications.
Can I have a second to that, and then we'll do one? Okay, well.
Is there a second?
I can't second it, if he doesn't tell us what the modifications are, he said in his statement, so.
Go ahead, do it, Bill.
You can move it, and I'll second it, or you can move it.
Page two.
We'll do the changes, please. Yeah.
Line 25, is sergeant spelled correctly? It's actually spelt as a surname, not as the actual title, I think it's SCA.
Huh?
Sergeant.
No.
G E A N T. Which is spelled incorrectly.
G E A N T, so, whoever reads sergeant throughout the, that particular section, if that could be corrected.
Yeah.
Page three, line 18, PWD, shouldn't that be DPW?
No.
No, it's-
It's officially public, okay, just fine, okay, thank you, moving on, page, page 10, line 27, it reads, Council Boyd spoke of the statement in the petition that reads, we know PFA's, I believe it was Council Dwyer that was speaking at that time, because I didn't, I know I didn't ask the question, what the definition of high was.
Oh, wait a minute, what line are you on?
Line 27, page 10.
How did you miss line 22?
I haven't gotten there yet.
A Polar beer?
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
That was on purpose.
The only way we could figure that, Dan, if you don't remember, we'd have to have the tape reviewed.
They put these things in the trouble system.
Okay, so it was, you do remember saying that, okay, so it was Dan Dwyer for that.
What?
Go ahead.
And then on page 10, line 22, and page 11, line 7, it's not polar beer, it's polar bear.
Beer.
Yeah, beer would be better. Polar only makes soda.
Not in Aruba.
Huh?
In Aruba, there's a polar beer.
Oh, really?
Oh, that's where it's coming from.
Unless MVD's coming out with the new product that we're not aware of.
Any further?
That's all I got, Madam Chair.
Tom Mayon?
What's that?
Yes, second, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any other changes, which is, we usually do it, that's, that's why I was confused.
Well, when he makes this, was, in my opinion, was, when he made the statement with following modifications, it's hard to make a second before he's finished his statement, that's all I was suggesting. On page 13, I had some questions, I guess, it starts on the first line, Council Dwyer added St. Cobain is not the bad guy, you have to remember that they, at no time, did anything illegal, or used materials that were illegal or banned, and I just wondered if that read correctly. When I read it through first time, I didn't give a-
Karma, have to remember what helped.
Punctuation would help, but that's what he said.
You have to remember karma.
They had no time, comma, did anything illegal, at no time did, I was, when I read it through first time, I didn't pause there, and when I was reading it just now aloud, I did, and so-
Yeah, if they had bracketed the they and time with a, with a comma, it would have, it would have read a little easier.
Yep, agreed.
So, maybe a comma in there, or something would help, just to make it a little clearer to read.
Yeah, remember.
They had no time, did anything illegal.
Karma, have to remember.
It's not called for, it's just awkward words.
Yeah.
Oh, it wasn't you, Dan.
It's the way you said it, too.
She's not calling you awkward, Dan.
I've never received any oratory words.
After, they had no time, did anything illegal, or used materials that were illegal or banned, you could put quotes around that, you're saying?
Yeah, because that's basically, she, she wrote down what he said, because I remember him saying it.
I remember him saying it, yeah.
I do, too.
I don't disagree with it.
That's the record.
Okay, and then on line nine, the second sentence there, he believes history will tell show, based on DuPont, I think he said will show, not will tell.
Will show.
Or if he did say both, he meant one versus the other, so just leave, take out tell.
He believes history will show, yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any other changes?
I, I will change one.
Finley, yeah?
Page 12, line 46, where it says, to know, the regular authority authority answers to nobody, unaccounted, unelected bureaucrats, I think I said.
To change individuals to bureaucrats?
Unelected, unaccountable bureaucrats, were my words, actually.
Sounds like something you'd say.
All right.
I use the phrase regularly, so that's why I know how I say it.
Yes, you do. Okay.
I do.
Any others? All those in favor of the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, 700.
Well, I, I have to abstain.
Oh, thank you, so it's 601, abstention will be Jackie Flood. Okay, comments from the press, saying none, comments from the public, saying none, comments from the council, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and very quickly, last night was the NRPC meeting, and one of the developments that was discussed at the NRPC meeting last night, was the development of a strategic plan for the future of the NRPC, one of the things that, two of the things that was incorporated into the strategic planning was some ideas on, on promoting economic development, but another idea of combining, and I'm probably not going to get this correct, so please work with me, combining transportation monies, and working with DOT, and the Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, and, and creating a new body, which would meet to decide every year, how those specific monies would be allocated. Now, the, whether or not DOT buys into this, is going to be contingent on a meeting that they're having on Monday, however, the commission was looking to memorialize the strategic plan at that particular time, as presented, and I had argued successfully, that they really ought to reach out to the donor communities in the NRPC, to have the discussion with the local legislative bodies, about what does the strategic plan mean, especially where you're creating, potentially creating a, a new body, that's going to have a level of fiduciary responsibility, much along the lines of what the Conservation Commission does, there are exceptions to this, to this particular thing, the knock on, the federal bridges program is not going to be impacted, the federal highways program is not going to be impacted by this, so I'm not sure what monies are available that are actually going to impact Merrimack per se, but I've asked Tim Roche, the Executive Director, to present the strategic plan, and to present this particular thing to the Merrimack Town Council in October, so I've asked him to, and I suggested the, the 20, 27th, as a possible meeting date to come to the Town Council to talk about, I felt, it's, it's not that I'm against strategic planning, I did not feel comfortable exercising a vote, one way or the other, without at least this body having an understanding of what the NRPC is trying to accomplish, if you take Nashua out of the equation, we're the second largest, believe we're the second largest community in the commission, we pay a significant amount of dues to participate in this commission, so based on that particular perspective, I felt it was incumbent for Tim to come and talk to this body, so, I was encouraged to mention this, because what they've, were going back and forth, is the commission, they're trying to get the commissioners to go back to their own legislative bodies, and actually talk about what goes on in the NRPC meeting, and it's not to denigrate the members that we, that we do have serving on the NRPC, but it's very rare, I think Nelson Disco, and Tom, to some extent, and Tom Mayon, that will come back and talk a little bit about what's going on at the NRPC, but it's not like the regular rank and file that we appoint to serve on the NRPC have, have addressed this body, to bring items of concern to us, so, based on that particular point, Tim Roche is going to be reaching out to Eileen, to agenda an item, to talk about their strategic plan specifically, this particular, I don't want to call it a legislative body, but this body that's going to have some, some fiduciary control over how transportation monies are spent, so.
So he will talk to Eileen to-
Yes, I've asked him to reach out to Eileen, to make sure that it gets put on the agenda.
Good.
Actually, sorry, Dan, I just, I wanted to ask Bill a question, and I should know the answer. I didn't do it. How many members are, do we have on the NRPC? Five, myself, Karen Elmer, and not Pan Walker, and I forget the two other individuals. It's, it's an interesting point, we should hear what's going on annually, and so on, and it's trying to get to that game, and so, that's something we should talk at some point.
It's the look, isn't it?
Did it have anything to do with trying to coordinate the more local projects through the 10-year plan?
No, as a matter of fact, it's pulling monies from the 10-year plan.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay, so-
You can talk with Eileen.
I, what I will do, is I'm, I checked my email today, I did not see anything, but there is a presentation that was used, and there was some notes with the strategic plan, as soon as I get the PDF, I will email to everybody, so that they can read it for their, for themselves. What did I say wrong?
Nothing.
You skipped the email.
That's right, he, that's-
That's all I wanted to report on, thank you.
Anyone else? Saying none?
Motion to adjourn, seconded.
Okay, motion adjourned, Dan, right, seconded by, all those, by Bill Boyd, encouraging, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, gee, let me think, 700.